Good evening everyone, welcome to our special council meeting for November 4th. Six oh three. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Alright. Is there anything? Yeah.
Yes, can you speak up a little bit louder please?
Can you hear me?
Uh, a little bit?
How loud now?
Can you give us just one second real quick, let's see if we can... Okay, uh, can you try it again please?
Hello, hello?
Okay, uh, go ahead, we can hear you now.
Okay. I have something to read off for you guys, ready?
Uh, one second. Is this, is this, just to confirm, is this on item, uh, for the special meeting? On any items, not on the agenda? Or on the agenda? Or is this gonna be for the regular meeting? Hello, can you hear us?
Yes sir.
Okay, uh, is this for the regular meeting or for the special meeting?
I'm sorry?
Is your comments for the special meeting or for the regular meeting?
Sure, for the special meeting.
Okay, go ahead please, and state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My rec, the name for the record is gonna be Gary Owen.
Go ahead.
Are you ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening Mayor and City Council. I'm calling to express deep concerns about rumors going around in the community. Word has it that Ger Paul Samra has told people in Livingston that he plans to settle a lawsuit with a former police chief by paying out over one hundred thousand dollars of our taxpayer money and offering his job back. I'm pissed off, especially considering the millions of dollars our city has paid out in lawsuits. You have no right to hand away our money behind closed doors. As a council, you have failed us by continuing to run your mouth. You disclose confidential information to the public and waste money that could be used for our community. When was the last time entities took a look around and saw what's happening around us? We already have to deal with Gavin Newsom in this shithole blue state, and now we have to deal with disgusting people like you. You should be ashamed of yourself for continuing to screw the hardworking people that live in Livingston. We demand that you protect our money in this law, and investigate Ger Paul Samra, and the entire City Council for violations of the ground act. There are many of us who have remained silent for a long time. That can and will change very quickly if you keep playing games instead of doing your damn jobs.
Okay, uh, can you hear us, are you done? Just a double... Alright, um, is there any additional citizen comments on the, on the phone? Hearing none, coming back into the chamber, is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at seven twelve?
Mr. Mayor, minor corrections, gonna be six twelve.
Six twelve, okay, alright, we gotta change this clock here. Six twelve, thank you. Um, conflict of interest declaration. Item number three, members of the City Council will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matters in which they or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit or where such a benefit could be perceived. Is there any declarations? Seeing none, moving forward. Item number four, closed session. Uh, we do have four point one, four point two, four point three, four point four. Item four point one is conference with lever negotiator, lever negotiator Jose Antonio Ramirez. Uh, City Manager and with the employee organizations Clerical Bargaining Unit, Police Supervisory Employees Association, Management and Confidential Bargaining Unit, Livingston Police Officers Association, and Public Works and Parks Unit. Item number two is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, John Marco versus City Livingston, case number two three C V zero one six four seven. Four point three, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, subdivisions D two and E one, and we have one matter in this, uh, item. Item number four point four, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code, uh, five four nine five six point nine, Section D four, and we have one matter. And, uh, six fourteen, we're going to retire into closed session and we'll be back and report out from closed session.
Next we have item 1.4, changes to the agenda. Council, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to humbly request that we...items 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4, that we bring at our next meeting because Councilmember Roth is not here so I think it would be good to have everybody's input.
Which items? Can you repeat that again?
The three discussions, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Quick question for staff. Mr. Mayor, is there anything pressing that was planning to be stated relating to the general plan update that we definitely want to get in tonight? And if not, I'm happy to move that to the next meeting.
We'd like to...staff did prepare for our presentation this evening so it's...we would like to communicate out if possible.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. And I still...I will then request that we table items 8.2 and 8.4 to the following meeting.
Which numbers?
8.2 and 8.4.
8.2, 8.4. Roll call, Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Protim Semra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Roth is not in attendance.
Next we have item 1.4, changes to the agenda. Council, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to humbly request that we...items 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4, that we bring at our next meeting because Councilmember Roth is not here so I think it would be good to have everybody's input.
Which items? Can you repeat that again?
The three discussions, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Quick question for staff. Mr. Mayor, is there anything pressing that was planning to be stated relating to the general plan update that we definitely want to get in tonight? And if not, I'm happy to move that to the next meeting.
We'd like to...staff did prepare for our presentation this evening so it's...we would like to communicate out if possible.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
And I still...I will then request that we table items 8.2 and 8.4 to the following meeting.
Which numbers?
8.2 and 8.4.
8.2, 8.4. Roll call, Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Semra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
All right, Council, are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, at this time I will ask Legal to provide an update from closed session, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss items 4.1 and 4.2 on this evening's closed session agenda. Deliberation occurred, no final action was taken, and the City Council will reconvene in closed session after the open session item. Thank you.
Mr. Moran, can you please close the special meeting?
All right, so at 8:11 we're going to close the special meeting and we're gonna...
8:11 or 7:11?
7:11.
7:11. We've got to change...yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss items four point one and four point two on this evening's closed session agenda. Deliberation occurred, no final action was taken, and the city council will reconvene in closed session after the open session item. Thank you.
Moran, can you please close the, uh, the special meeting?
All right, so at eight eleven, we're gonna close the special meeting and we're gonna, uh.
Eight eleven or seven eleven?
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven. We gotta change, yeah. All right, and so we are coming back into regular, uh, our regular meeting at seven twelve. Uh, next on the agenda, we have items, item number two, citizen comments. At this time, uh, this section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening. So at this time, I will invite anyone on the phone, uh, with, uh, citizen comments. Here and now, coming, uh, to the chamber, I will invite, uh, members, uh, in the chamber for, uh, citizen comments. You can step forward to the lectern and, uh, identify yourselves.
Jeanne O'Cooy Livingston, I just, I just want to say how happy I was to participate in the event on Friday, and I have to thank Patricia and the city to work, everybody working together to build community and what Jackie's done for this community for the many, many years of getting people together. And this is what I think is really important we do. We build community and sustainability. We had somebody that lives in a truck, and she helped for eight hours that day. And I said, where you live? And she's right over there. You see that truck? She goes over to the T A's, it placed it, have her shower. She's probably in her sixties. And she said it cost her twenty dollars to have a shower, but she says if she doesn't have stamp, the snap, or, and she can't cook, of course, because she lives in a truck. Anyway, it, we need to really think about sustainability, and, um, I just appreciate everything that the city's been doing, and it was really a joy that, it's a good festival, and I think having your Friday things were, have been really successful. It seemed to be. I've, I've attended those too. So it's all good stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber?
Good evening, everyone. Um, good evening, Mayor Moran, council members, and Livingston City staff members. Um, my name is Patricia Zamora. I'm the founder and director of Seven Gen Art House. And just real quick background for those who might not know, Seven Gen is, focuses connecting art, community, and healing, and our workshops, artist residencies, and program center on health and arts through cultural expression, using creativity as a path for personal and collective well-being. Um, we are part of a program called CalCor, uh, which is an initiative of Community Vision. Community Vision is Northern California Community Loan Fund, which connects capital and expertise with people and organizations working to strengthen financially strong and culturally vibrant communities. And they do this through lending, advising, partnership. They support nonprofits, small businesses, cooperatives, community orgs. And to date, they have invested more than six hundred and sixteen million in financing and leveraged over three point three billion and distributed more than thirty-nine million in grants to advance this work. I'm sharing this because as part of the CalCor program this year in twenty twenty-five, um, I have been working closely with the city of Livingston, local businesses, neighbors who are working together, the senior center, Livingston High School faculty, students, and the Livingston Library to, um, co-lead, uh, community activation along the D Street and Main Street corridor. And one of the things we did was we did a community conversation, and we have a report now from that community conversation with recommendations from residents around what do they want to see in terms of community activation around health, wellness, and connection. And we actually gave folks a chance to work together and practice when what Jeanne mentioned at the Dia de los Muertos event, our first one here. And so, um, sorry. So we'd like to follow up with the report and come back to the council so that you could get a high-level overview and be able to go deeper, see where there might be questions, and hopefully alignment and common ground on how we can move forward. So I'm gonna stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is Mario Mendoza. I was just coming in to see, uh, many years ago, the city of Livingston, how contracted with the school district, uh, the track field. It was open to the public at night, and everybody was walking. But after, we, we helped them out with measure, I forgot which measure it passed, uh, but we had an, uh, an agreement, or the city had an agreement, that they were gonna let the people of Livingston, the resident of Livingston, use that, that track. And it's been closed, locked up for many years, and even though we have a police department that patrols that area and takes care of it, I just wanted to see, is it, uh, anything we can do so it could be open to the public during the evenings or during after-school, so they could go and walk the track? And also, I wanted to see if, uh, have you guys done a survey on the B Street after the apartments are open and see what the traffic, how it's gonna be? And are we gonna have the enough, uh, law enforcement out there when it happens, when, uh, so that's what, that's all about, you know? I have the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, additional citizen comments in the chamber this time? Seeing none. Uh, closing the, uh, citizen comments at seven eighteen. All right, um, I do want to say something, you know, uh, I was gonna provide as part of my report a little bit later, but, you know, I'm not sure if you're gonna be here by then. Uh, but I do want to say thank you to everyone that really got involved in the, uh, all of the work that you've been doing in the community. Uh, a lot of meetings along with the support of the city, and I know that different schools, uh, Seven Gen and, uh, Ms. Patricia Zamora, you've really been, um, the one that has really kind of spearheaded, uh, this type of work, even though, as you mentioned, and I know that it has, it was done in a very short period of time, when normally things like this take six to twelve months to prepare and plan and all of that. You, you know, all of this came together very, in a very, in a couple of months. Um, you know, for being the first Dia de los Muertos, considering that there was another, uh, multiple events, and considering it was, uh, Halloween night, you know, um, it was great. It was great to really see the people come out and, uh, there was, uh, I, I got some feedback and, you know, uh, from residents in the community, and I'm like, that's great, you know, because they're hoping that next year, this is not their, uh, the, uh, the, uh, alters are not, they're, they're just the one evening, but maybe, maybe through the weekends, so more families can come over and visit and stuff like that. So it's, it's good. It's good, uh, engagement, good response, and, and, um, there's my time. Uh, and, uh, so I just want to say thank you, uh, for everything that you and, and, and your team, because I know that there's been multiple people that have been involved in this. And like we have said before, this is, uh, the success or, or failure of this is because of teamwork or lack of teamwork. So, uh, thank you, and, uh, hopefully this is just the first one of, of many others to come, uh, in the future, and, uh, great work. Thank you. I appreciate it. And, um, and I think later, maybe Mr. Ramirez can provide, uh, some additional, uh, information in regards to, uh, Mr., uh, Mario's, uh, questions, and then, um, because I think probably, I, I also want to know too what happened back then, because even though I was here, but I wasn't here, you know, I was one of those that lived in the city, but I wasn't really involved or knew anything that was going on, and I, I would personally like to know. All right, um, item number three, uh, Supervisor Jean Pacheco was, uh, he did text me, he was not gonna be able to make it tonight, uh, but, uh, uh, he did send me some information in regards to some of the suggestions made last time, and he has already, uh, presented those to the, to the county. Uh, and, uh, if, if nothing else, uh, he'll be here, uh, at our next meeting. Item number four, uh, we have announcements and reports, uh, city staff announcements and reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, we do have, uh, Miguel, he's gonna present, give you a little update today as it relates to the, the housing element, and then a little later, under the discussion portion, we'll talk about the, the general plan.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, members of the city staff, members of the public. Just a quick update on the housing element update. As you know, um, the city has been working on the update of the housing element since twenty twenty-four. We have contracted with Rincon to help prepare the, the update. The last thing that has happened is that we submitted that to H C D in October. Uh, this is a, we've had a number of responses from H C D, the State House and Department of Community Development, and so, uh, we responded to them. They have ninety days to review and respond whether or not the city's in compliance with the state housing element law. Some of the things that we are also doing concurrently at the, as part of the housing element update is we're moving forward with the general plan and rezone of property to accommodate some of our housing inventory sites. So we identified six properties, and these six properties will be presented to the planning commission at their next meeting. Uh, in addition, the, uh, we also identified a number of additional code amendments to our zoning code to implement housing, um, laws. So those items will be presented to the planning commission. These will be eventually come to the city council, so we're moving forward. Um, we're hoping we can get a letter from H C D saying that we're, you know, conditionally in compliance, that the house element means state law upon adoption. Um, that's kind of it where we're at in terms of the house element, so keep our fingers crossed that H C D doesn't give us any more, uh, questions. We're doing the best we can. As you know, we already have two projects under construction that are geared for, uh, providing affordable housing opportunities. Is there any questions or comments?
Counsel, are there any questions? Seeing none. Well, thank you. Next, um, uh, next we have, uh, city manager announcements and reports.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. I do have a few things. One, uh, and this is one of the things that we can relay to, um, Mr. Pacheco, you know, so we had, um, the county came and picked up the, the ballot box, and so we had a lot of individuals after five o'clock and wanted to deposit the, the ballots. Of course, we can't take the ballots, so we instructed them to go to other places, Delhi, uh, Atwater, et cetera. So we'll figure that, see if we can work with Mr. Pacheco and figure that out for the next go-around. Uh, so we apologize to the public for that. Um, and then the other thing that, uh, staff is working on right now is, as we're looking at punching, uh, the Wenton Parkway from B Street to F Street, I'm sure many of you who, uh, don't live in this community, when you came in off of Wenton Parkway, you probably saw these larger-than-life cutouts, you know, that we have, uh, that represents a lot of the different cultures that we have in our community. So since that's kind of where the, the street's gonna punch through, we're looking at, and we're looking, uh, suggestions from counsel and any, uh, public, but staff has been looking at moving, keeping all of those larger-than-life cutouts, but, uh, moving them over to, uh, Campbell, kind of where the, you have the underpass, and, uh, and making, making that corridor, uh, kind of like a art, a cultural arts corridor, and pause, you know, maybe you got some good ideas, but as you come up, you get to see them on the right-hand side, and there'll be more, uh, in the works, and so, you know, finding a really nice spot for these, um, larger-than-life cutouts would be great. Uh, we, I also want to thank, you know, Community Vision and Seven Gen for all your partnership and, and all the activations, and we actually had, um, somebody come in today that's actually looking at the church right there across from, um, the police station and wants to put in, uh, some type of, uh, pastry, coffee shop, tea shop, something like that. And so it's, it's gonna be interesting. So there's, there's activations happening in that corridor. So thank you. And related to that is, uh, we're, we've already, uh, outlined and designated almost ten thousand square feet for a community garden over by the Rexplex. So we're gonna be coming to council for, um, to give, to get direction in terms of, um, you know, metering, are we gonna charge, not charge for the water, uh, but, you know, uh, figuring all that out. But that's a great area. I think it would be a good opportunity for the community and a good space. Uh, lastly, that we will be having, um, and I would call it an audit by the CalRecycle. So they're gonna come out, uh, let's see here, November seventeenth and eighteenth, and so be, they'll be inspecting residential and commercial containers. So, uh, we want to make sure that everybody is recycling their goods or depositing all the different wastes and recyclables in the proper containers. Uh, as it relates to the, uh, the Merced, uh, track, Mario, um, first time I've heard of that, uh, but I'll check into it and see, you know, um, we have a good relationship with the schools here, so we'll figure that out one way or another. Sorry that I don't have the answer this evening. As it relates to traffic counts, of course, we, we always, whenever there's any developments, we always have them do a traffic, um, study, and these traffic studies, not only do they talk about, you know, all the different impacts, but it also designates the, their fair share of contributions for the improvements, the widening, and any, the, the light signals and everything that goes on in that corridor. So we'll, uh, we'll talk afterwards if you have any specifics, and then we do have engineering here in Public Works, and we're happy to talk to you and, and give you more info. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, next we have item number five, uh, conflict of interest declaration. Members of the city council may, will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matters in which they or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit, or with such a benefit could be perceived. Is there any conflict of interest declaration? Seeing none. Moving forward, item number six, consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by a member of the public, the city manager, or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public, city council, or city manager request that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items should be limited to three minutes per person regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda. First, um, uh, I'd like to ask is, does council have any questions on any items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I request, uh, to pull item six point six from consent.
Okay.
And I would actually request to table item six point seven to a future meeting. This is the state homeland security grant programs. Um, reasoning for this, uh, had some legal questions, uh, for our city attorney, uh, that will likely take some time, uh, to assess a little deeper, um, just concerns with potential obligations that may come onto the city depending on policy implemented by the federal Department of Homeland Security. And then, uh, there's other potential nuances here. If we apply for this funding, uh, we may run into sanctuary city, uh, limits from the Department of Homeland Security, and so would like to talk through that a little bit more with staff before approving the item.
On item six seven, I would like to ask staff, are there any restrictions or, uh, in regards to deadlines that we should be worried about if we, if we're to consider to table this item for our next meeting?
Good evening, Counsel. Uh, John Ramirez, interim chief of police. So yes, there was a deadline. I believe it was in September. Um, when I talked to them last time, they said just go ahead and submit it anyways. Um, I haven't checked on it since then. I can, I can reach back with them, but there was a deadline, but it sounded like they were gonna give us some leeway with it as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if that's the case. Mr. Mayor, if that's the case, I'm okay with leaving it on and moving it forward tonight if the rest of the council is okay with that. And then as things may actually move forward with the program, maybe we can discuss those nuances later. But I would still like to remove item 6.6 from consent.
Okay. Anything else, Counsel? Okay, I'm okay with pulling. Well, actually, let me ask staff, is there any precautions before we consider pulling this item too as well in regards to why we should do it now and not later?
No, there is no detriment for holding off on it.
Okay.
I'm requesting to pull it from consent and discuss it right after we approve the rest of the consent.
That's what I was going to say, you're asking for discussion, not.
Yes, not to table the item, yeah.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying. So I don't see anything else. Other than that, I'm okay with pulling 6.6. Do we need to do a roll call? No, should be fine. All right. So we have a remainder of the consent agenda, 6.1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, and 9. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor Potem, real quick, sorry. We need to amend one word in the treasurer's report. I would like to put that into the record to change the balance from May to September. There's one line about that. I'd like to shout out a resident for pointing that out. So I want to get that into the record.
Okay. And then at this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there?
Did you call for a motion or are you going to go for a comment first?
Comment first.
Because you said it, okay.
Public comment? I'd like to pull 6.8. I know it's an emergency, but I have questions about the water. Thank you.
Okay. So 6.8. We'll pull 6.6, 6.8 for separate discussion. At this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any questions? Is there anyone on the phone in regards to the consent agenda items? Coming back to the chamber, is there any questions or citizen comments in regards to the consent agenda in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 7:34. I will entertain a motion for the remainder of the items on the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion that we approve consent items 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, 6.5, 6.9. Oh, and 6.7, I guess we're not.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Samra. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Uppal.
Yes, and very quickly, I'd like to thank PD for the item on the radio systems. I know that's been a long time coming, so thanks for the work on that. I'm sure you guys are going to be excited.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
All right. Next, we have item 6.6, which is the resolution authorizing staffing changes for the police department. Approve adding one code compliance officer part-time position. Approve the revised comprehensive pay schedule and authorize staff to initiate recruitment to fill one code compliance officer part-time position.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So this is something that council did request. I'd like to thank staff for bringing it back, finding a solution by implementing a part-time code enforcement officer. My reason for wanting to pull the item is related to how much we're appropriating for this fiscal year. So there is a request for a $31,490 increase to this fiscal year's budget to account for this staff time. That would be the top step paid out for 1,000 hours, I believe, over the entire fiscal year. And my only concerns with this is that's enough to accommodate 1,000 hours for an entire fiscal year. When I had reached out to staff and requested a timeline on how soon we expect to get this person on board, we're looking at about four to five months, which would put us in March or April. And so by that time, there's only around three to four months left in the fiscal year. And so what I'm thinking is, is it necessary to appropriate a full fiscal year's budget for this position when we're only looking at a few months of staffing? Can we consider reducing the appropriation amount to accommodate for the time that will not be paid out? Because there's no way we're going to get to that limit. And so I'm open to council and staff feedback on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I agree with Councilmember Uppal. We should do it appropriation based on the amount of times, like you said. So we'll just, now, what will become is, and I'm in agreement, but say that they get, they get the person hired in February or, and we only appropriate to March, will there be enough? So I'm just kind of, I just want to make sure that we have sufficient funds to cover the timeline, you know, that we can. That's all I'm asking, you know, we, is that March you think is fair? Or you think we should go give another month worth of leeway in case they get somebody in earlier?
Can we consider just cutting it in half? So maybe a six month?
Cut it in half?
So if we cut it in half, it'd come out to exactly $15,745. Maybe we can just put it at $15,500, set it there, and if need be, come back and re-appropriate?
Finance or Mr. City Manager?
Yes, that is, that is certainly reasonable. Initially, when we, when we decided to, when we were looking at this, when Councilmember Roth brought this forward, we were only looking at, we were looking at two different positions, you know, full-time code enforcement officer, full-time animal control. And then after more analysis on staff, it turned out that this would be the best fit for what our needs are in the community and have coverage into the weekends. So it's taken some time. So the suggestions being made by Mr. Uppal and Mr. Gropol, Samra, is perfectly fine. So not a problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Uppal, do you have any objections if we just round it to $16,000?
We can do that.
Just to, all right.
All right. At this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any citizen comments on the phone in regards to this item? 7:39, bringing it back to the chamber. Is there any citizen comments in the chamber in regards to this item? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 7:39, bringing it back to the dais to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will motion to approve the item with the change in the appropriation amount from $31,490 to $16,000.
And Mr. Mayor, I will second that.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Uppal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion, motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. Next, we have item 6.8. Resolution of the city council of the city of Livingston ratifying emergency equipment procurement and emergency repairs to all eight. One, approve the emergency procurement of a new well motor and emergency service call from Shannon Pump Company in the amount of $16,902.32. Two, to authorize the finance department to make a supplement appropriation to the Water Enterprise Fund in the amount of $16,902.32. And three, to authorize the city manager to execute all required documents. At this time, if you'd like to come up and ask the question on this item?
I do see it as an emergency. Do I need to say my name? Okay. I do see it as an emergency. I was just wondering what the policy is, because I know we have a lot of water, you know, needs of things. Is there, you know, some study done before we have an emergency to go out to bidding different? Or do we always use the same one? What's, what's the policy on that? I would think maybe if we had some information before there was an emergency, what type of maybe specialties different groups have.
Thank you, Mrs. Akui, for that question. So as you stated, an emergency is that, it's an emergency. So the wells, as you know, they're, they're mechanical. And so, you know, there's a lot of things that actually happen, and there's wear and tear. So staff is continuously out there, you know, monitoring, checking the best that they can. But from time to time, as you know, things fail. And, and so if it's a health and safety item, you know, we have to address right away. So then it basically becomes an emergency. And, and so we have to act on it right away. If it's something that does not fit that category, then it's, then we go through the proper procurement procedures. In this particular case, again, because it fell under the health and safety and it could not wait, we had to act on it as an emergency and then bring it back to council for ratification. So, but very much appreciate your questions. But we do have procurements. And as a matter of fact, this evening, on the agenda, there are, one of our other attorneys, we have an item that we'll be presenting because we do have procurement policies. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I would like to state that the following, just for counsel.
State your name and title.
Anthony Chavati, Public Works Director. I, I just wanted to ensure counsel and the residents that when we do have emergencies take place on issues like a motor failure, and we call the pump contractor out for repair, staff is evaluating and asking for a quote first. It's, we're not giving them an open checkbook. We are asking for a quote and reviewing the costs that they're submitting to make sure it's still in alignment with what the other costs are from other contractors. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You've got to refresh my memory. I've got to think back when it was on the council agenda. You had asked, or we had it for discussion, about you buying an extra pump and having it on hand. What is this, what did we ever do with that?
So, great question. The pumps did come in. The motors came in recently, not too long ago. There was some lead time on that. So we do have, and that is the critical equipment inventory that council approved. And that was two, two motors, turbine, vertical turbine motors and a VFD, a 200 horsepower VFD. Now, these two motors, I don't know, a while back, but if you recall, I did tell you that it's not one motor fits all. They're all different sizes. You know, we have 200 horsepower wells motors. We have 175, we got 150, we have 125. So next year, what I'm planning to do as well is request a budget for additional motors for our critical inventory supply.
Perfect. Thank you, Anthony.
Let me follow up on that question, on that information that you provided. You mentioned that motors are different powers on, or currently on.
Horsepower.
Yeah, horsepower on each one of those wells. And then again, you're the expert, and we're just trying to figure out what, what is the best thing to do. Is there a specific reason why each, there's different.
Sizes.
Sizes? Or should we consider looking to eventually, down the road, looking to have all the same sizes? And then that way, you know, in 10 years or so, one size fits all?
Yeah, it was just at that time when the, whoever designed the well, designed it to produce so many gallons per minute of water production at that time. So you calculate that need and install whatever horsepower motor at that time, you know. Back then, usually years ago, you see a lot of 1,000 gallon per minute wells being installed in municipalities, 1,200 gallons per minute. Now you're seeing more 1,500 gallons per minute, and even some of the larger ones, that's 2,000 gallons per minute. So that's why you see a fluctuation of a variety of different sizes of motors out in the water system. But it's not a bad idea to try to look at trying to design at a certain size so we could be more consistent.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you. So if there are no additional questions for items, for item 6.8, bringing it back to the dais, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, really quickly, just want to say that I've been in communication with staff about this item for several months now. Just, this is one of multiple failures that we've had over the year. And so talking about what we can do moving forward to help prevent these kinds of issues. Was in touch with our Public Works Director and thinking about the potential of doing additional testing in the winter to get a better gauge of our capacity before we get into high-demand season. That's something that I would be supportive of if that recommendation stays. And I would ask that you guys consider that when that time comes.
Thank you. Is there any other comments, questions? So I will entertain a motion at this time?
Almost to approve.
So I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Uppal. Is there a second?
I will second it.
So we have a second by Councilmember Mayor Potem Samra. We'll wait for roll call. So Monica, we do have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Uppal, second by Mayor Potem Samra on item 6.8. To approve the item.
Councilmember Uppal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. Next item, we have item number seven, public hearing. Item 7.1, resolution opting into the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Account. The first reading of the, the first reading and introduction of a regular ordinance adding a new chapter to the Livingston Municipal Code to implement the same act. And adoption of an urgency ordinance adding a new chapter to the Livingston Municipal Code to implement the same act.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My colleague Joaquin Vasquez is on the line to discuss this item and present it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, but is there a way that you can raise the volume in here a little bit now? It's going to be difficult.
Thank you.
Give us just one second.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's give it a try. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Moran, Mayor Potem Samra, members of the city council. I just want to check the levels. Are we, are we good to go?
Yes, let's give it a try.
Excellent. Okay. I'm Joaquin Vasquez, Deputy City Attorney. Happy to present on this public hearing item 7.1. And this item includes three coordinated actions to allow the city to participate. And this is a mouthful, the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. We call it by its acronym UPA because otherwise it's too much of a mouthful. So there are three items. We have first, an adoption of a resolution to formally opt into UPA. Second, we have the introduction and first reading of a regular ordinance implementing UPA procedures. And third, we have adoption of an urgency ordinance requiring four council member votes to immediately implement those same regular ordinance provisions. So the background, under state law, cities like Livingston. So the background, under state law, cities like Livingston that have not yet opted into UPA must formally bid off public projects exceeding $5,000. And this includes construction, but a lot of minor items that fall into the definition of a public project, a public work. So in practice, this low threshold places a, a burden on staff where even minor work, such as a small concrete repair, must go through the full formal bidding cycle. Staff has to prepare bid documents, advertise the project, manage questions, put out addenda as necessary, receive sealed bids, and ultimately prepare a council stack report and consideration for award. All this for a job that might cost less, cost less than the process itself for the city. And what UPA offers is a streamlined, alternative state law framework that enables cities to tailor procedures to project size. If the city opts into UPA, the following limits would, would apply. So, on the lower end, projects up to $75,000 could be performed by negotiated direct contract purchase order or with the city's own forces. For the next tier, for projects up to 220,000, the city must use informal bidding procedures. And for the top tier project over $220,000, it must follow formal bidding procedures. And the city's participation into UPA requires two steps. First, we, the city would have to adopt and file a resolution with the state controller's office. And secondly, adopt an ordinance establishing the city's informal bidding procedures. The regular ordinance for your consideration not only covers the informal bidding procedures that are required to be in the ordinance, but it also details procedures for direct contracting, informal bidding, change orders, formal bidding, bid protest, bonding and insurance. And it would authorize the city manager to execute contracts under that first tier. Those are up to $75,000 for streamlining purposes. Now, anything above that, so contracts within the informal and formal bidding threshold, these are potentially projects, public works projects over $75,000, will continue to come before the city council for review and prospective approval after going through the necessary competitive, competitive bidding process. As to the urgency ordinance before you as well, substantively, it mirrors the regular ordinance and it would take effect immediately to avoid delay upon four city council member approval votes this evening. And the, the findings that are in that urgency ordinance note that immediate adoption is warranted in the interest of the public health, safety and welfare to deliver public works projects efficiently, to maintain essential infrastructure and services, to avoid delays caused by current low bidding thresholds and procedural bottlenecks. And finally, to support rapid response for damage from storms, utility failures, or other needed urgent repairs. On the fiscal end of things, there's no direct fiscal impact from the actions before you, but it's anticipated that opting into UPA would save staff time and reduce administrative costs for the smaller projects while still giving you oversight and, and ensuring public transparency. So ultimately, staff recommends that the council follow the recommendation, recommended actions in the staff regarding the resolution, the regular ordinance, and the urgency ordinance. And just to emphasize again, the urgency ordinance does require four votes for approval this evening. I appreciate your time. This concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions?
Yeah, maybe I didn't hear it properly, but just a quick question. Jose, whoever wants to answer, or Mr. Vasquez. If we approve this, and something is $75,000 or less, does it still come to the council to approve the contract, or it can bypass the council?
That's a great question, thank you. So if it's $75,000 or, or less, it can be directly negotiated without having to come to council?
I, I understand that part, but the question I have is, even though it can be negotiated, does the council still approve the contract? What's been negotiated?
So, so it, so there's two main components in that, in that tier, call it, the $75,000 or less. So within that tier, the city does not have to informally bid, competitively bid. It can directly negotiate, and of course, you know, staff would ensure to, you know, in light of public funds being used, to maximize the value of, of the contract. But it, it bypasses competitive bidding, that's one note. And then the second note is that it could be negotiated, executed by the city manager, and it would not come to council. So anything above $75,000 would come to council and would require either informal bidding or formal bidding. And the formal bidding will kick in on projects over $220,000.
Yeah, for me, Mr. Mayor, and our council, I don't have a problem with, you know, doing the direct, because it does save staff time if somebody's $75,000. They have a working relationship with the contractor, they know we can get a good deal. But I still want to have it come to the city, the council, to say, yes, we negotiated this, but we need the approval to execute the contract. We can go through the process of bringing it, not negotiating, but at least bring it to the council. Mr. Ramirez, do you understand what I was trying to say?
Hi, yes, Mr. Mayor. So, I mean, Mayor Protem. So, so this is, this falls under the UPA, so it's, it's, we have to actually follow a number of different procedures. And so Joaquin can probably, you know, communicate a little bit more how that works. I've never, I've never participated in, in, in this format before. So maybe if he can share a little bit more, and then, my assumption is that, you know, things might be able to be modified, modified here. So, Joaquin, if you can talk about the, how the UPA works, any other municipalities that are doing this? And you already talked about some of the benefits.
Sure, thank you, Mr. City Manager. So, I, I think what we can do is, and I, I think it's a, it's a creative proposal to still have the item come back to, to council. If there is consensus on this, I think there is a way, because essentially, the, what we could, what we could do is have the, on, on the lighter touch end of things, is have, after city manager execution, is to come back and have a report on, on items, projects within that $75,000 tier that, that have been approved. On, if we're shifting more to, to council approval, which may, you know, if something is urgent, it may sacrifice time where there's a delay for putting together a staff report and going to council for something that would be, you know, $10,000, $15,000, $7,000. So, that, that would be the, the push and pull there, where it can still be directly negotiated and we could still build it into where it comes to council for approval and at least reap the benefit of not having competitive bidding. But it is a policy decision as far as if you want to build in that council approval of that first tier up to $75,000.
Anthony, perhaps you can come forward and clarify for me? I think I'm, I'm stuck in a groundhog dog thing, you know.
I, I just want to impart that, ta, take for example, the well eight ratification, $16,000. If we opt into UPA, we wouldn't have to go through this emergency. We could work directly with the contractor and wouldn't have to go out to formal bidding.
Talk about the contractors, they're not just any contractors, they're?
No, they're all approved contractors through the different trades. Anytime we have to go out to, to formal bidding, that's anywhere from $900 to $1,300 just for advertisement alone. And we're talking about, most of the time, we're gonna have to ask engineering for a scope creation, so these contractors could bid on. Right now, as it stands, our in-house forces, our projects, as Joaquin stated, we're not supposed to do anything of value of over 5,000. That's really, really low. I mean, we're gonna have to contract left and right. And opting in up to the $75,000 allows our in-house forces to take on these projects, to do the crack sealing, to do the concrete repairs, the projects, the beautification, as our in-house forces has time to complete these projects. If the $75,000 is, is too high of a threshold, maybe council could consider something a little lower, 50,000. But that's just an idea. I don't know if that could be?
Okay, well, Anthony, help me understand this, okay? In the, in my simple way of thinking about this. Let's say that city thinks we need to do something, public works, whatever, and, I don't know, repair site, well, whatever it is, it doesn't matter, water line, and it's 74,500 is below that. I don't have a problem with the amount, but after you've negotiated it for the repair, whatever, I don't know, we're not talking emergency repairs, we're talking regular work. After you have gone and say, so okay, we know you, it's a fair price, 74,500, here's what the contract is. Does that contract come to the council? Or it's, public works and the city manager signs off and is gone, and the, and the city council never sees it?
From what I understand, that's under the city manager's purview to approve up to $75,000 contracts without having to create a staff report and resolution and come to council. That's my understanding of this UPA.
That's correct, yeah.
Informal, hold on, Mr. Vasquez, if it's informal procedure, then what?
Informal, from what I understand, and you could correct me if I'm, if I'm, if I misspeak Joaquin, but we have an option, or we reach out to the different trades, because we have to, if we opt into the UPA, then we have to create a contractors list with the different trades and different contractors that we work with, as long as they meet a certain criteria. And we, we could work directly with them through a purchase order or three, three informal bids from them.
And does that come to the council for approval?
If it's less than $75,000, no, but if it's above?
If it's over $75,000?
$75,000, yes.
Okay, that's what I was?
Yeah.
If I may, I just want to add a couple things. So, still, for those projects, $75,000 and under DIR registration and proper licensure for the particular trade in play are still gonna be required. Labor and materials bonds pursuant to state law are still gonna be required for projects over $25,000. But it's just that it's streamlined for that first $75,000 tier. And so on the next tier, over $75,000, up to $220,000 for the informal, Anthony is correct, where the city can give it to someone on its annual bench list that has to be properly maintained, or it could also advertise through the state to, with certain trades. So there are certain avenues there to get bidding done under the informal bidding procedures. On the final tier, the third tier, for projects over $220,000, then we're looking at the formal, more familiar to council bidding procedures. But the, the key is that over $75,000, everything is coming to council.
Thank yous, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna hold rest of my comments, and I'll hear what I can hear from the rest of the council.
One last comment, if I may, Mayor. Just, council, please take in consideration the cost of equipment that we have to purchase. Public works, everything's over $10,000, all my equipment, all my valves. We're talking on average, like $15,000, $8,000, $17,000 for, for these larger 12-inch valves that need replacement. So, we haven't kept up with the times yet. $10,000 is, is really low, a really low threshold. This does create a little more work for the public works department, but I believe it's gonna streamline the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, are there any other questions of this thing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question. And it's similar to the Mayor Protem's question, not necessarily of when this would come to council, but the relationship between the procurement allowed by this policy and its relationship to the procurement that's currently allowed, where we have a $10,000 threshold per fiscal year, per vendor, before something comes to the council. And so if we, if we approve this as is and make no amendments to the policy, this would allow everything under $75,000 to be signed off without bids and without council approval, only if it's a public works project. But if it's anything else, that's not in the category of public works, our existing $10,000 threshold still applies? That's a question, not a statement, I'm sorry. Does that existing threshold still apply? And I'm curious to know the nuance between those two.
Thank you, that, that's a great question. And, and we definitely want to draw a line between the, the construction, public works, contracting lane or arena, so to speak, that we're in right now in this discussion versus any other service. For example, you know, just general services, or professional services, like engineers or certain qualified consultants, or let's say like a software services contract. Those would all fall under the, for lack of a better term, you know, general or non-construction plain vanilla procurement procedures that are elsewhere in the code. So I, I think that's a great question, and, and I hope we, we address that. And, and I guess the other thing is that, to Anthony's point, the, the costs that come into play under public contracting law, the, the work also includes the materials necessarily. So that's why costs can escalate, you know, very quickly for construction works projects, as opposed to, you know, more general procurement where costs, you can buy sort of widgets and maybe have someone else deal with a, a service component. So the costs, as they're structured under, for public works contracts, can, you know, make the cost a lot higher. But I, I do also want to telegraph that there is in the works a, a separate ordinance that will be coming before the council in the future that is looking to, to modernize the non-construction, more general procurement procedures. And to, I just wanted to put that on, on your radar for now. But to answer the question, the, this is only with regard to construction.
Definitely, and I appreciate the point about the separate ordinance. I know Mr. Ramirez has been working on a, a mass procurement policy very early on in this tenure. And city attorney, I know we asked if we could include some language going forward about some specification on sole source contracting. So I was gonna ask a follow-up of how this would relate to that. And so it sounds like, and let's create a hypothetical scenario here, if we have three to four contracts under $75,000, and they're with the same vendor? And so it sounds like, and let's create a hypothetical scenario here, if we have three to four contracts under seventy-five thousand dollars and they're with the same vendor, if we approve this as stated, those would never kick up for any council discussion because those are specified within this ordinance. But everything else would fall under the current threshold that we have set per vendor.
That's exactly right, and I like the way you presented that because, just giving you an example, for example, with sidewalks, there's so many things that go wrong with sidewalks or other sort of pavement activities where Anthony may have one issue next week with a certain contractor and then can use a separate contract another month, you know, to do a different sidewalk or address a different pavement issue. So it's not uncommon for those separate agreements to be necessary, just given how city infrastructure works.
Definitely. I appreciate that. And if council and staff are open to this, I am sharing some sentiment with the Mayor Pro Tem of wanting some of this to come back, but not going too far to the point where there's no value in putting this policy in place because everything needs to come back. And so I'm fully okay with the thresholds as presented, everything under seventy-five thousand dollars, no bids. Would council be open to putting language in this policy slash ordinance that if contracts that fall under this ordinance are going to specific vendors and specific vendors have received monies up to a certain threshold within the same fiscal year, after they hit that threshold, then the contracts now come to council? It doesn't mean that bidding will be required or because of the language in the ordinance, but because specific vendors have hit a threshold, they will come to us after they've been negotiated. Are we open to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That does put my concerns at ease. It can be by vendor as well. We just need to come up with a number. That's actually a good. I was kinda concerned about giving a cart blank to a particular vendor, you know, getting and not knowing about it. But if we can come up with a number, Anthony, what do you think is approximately, I mean, I know it's hard to predict, but you have, obviously you have vendors that you work with all the time. Is there like a certain number that you average out on or something? I know it's hard, I know it's a very tough question. I'm just trying to put a number in there before it comes in here, you know? We can do, you know, three contracts, is that fair enough?
I apologize for interjecting, but I do have an idea that may, may help. And with regard to policy, the city manager, sort of tearing off the ordinance, related to the ordinance, can create regulations, procedures related to the ordinance. And so part of that could be a policy developed in order to address the council's concern, where on the policy side, we can, we can have a requirement that, once a certain threshold is met, and that could be, you know, determined at a certain point, where under this policy that would be adopted, you know, after the seasoning, after adoption, could cover that. Another idea would be something we could build into the ordinance itself, which would require the city manager to maybe do quarterly updates to the council on the, that first seventy-five thousand dollar tier. And then maybe the council can react at that point and give the city manager direction, maybe to consider other contractors or give policy direction to the city manager based on that monthly, quarterly, whatever sort of, you know, bi-annual update you wanna give. So I think it might be something to consider, if you, you know, an update on that first seventy-five thousand dollar tier from the city manager. And then when you get those updates, you can provide further direction based on what you're seeing.
Joaquin, thanks for the information. Anthony, do you have anything to add before?
I would recommend a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand as a trigger to bring to council once a vendor reaches that threshold.
Are you sure that's gonna be, because that's not even two. Basically, one, one.
Trying to be conservative.
One direct and then the next one you are gonna have to come back. Is that gonna be sufficient? Because I don't wanna tie too many hands. I do wanna create efficiency because sometimes staff time, I mean, not sometimes, but staff time is also valuable. If something can be done by a PO, of course. But then also, I just don't wanna have one contractor get a million dollars worth of.
Right.
You know, I mean, I just need to, where the council says, wait a minute, this contractor is getting it. And it's not to say the staff's not doing their job, just to make sure that we have oversight, you know?
Yeah, just remember, anything over two-twenty-five is gonna automatically come to council.
I understand that.
So maybe a little bit more, a hundred-and-fifty, but as Joaquin just stated, the city manager can create the policy and implement those thresholds. And if it's not working the first year, he could change them upon a council direction.
Okay, to me, I think a hundred-and-fifty threshold per a, a direct contract or something for, per vendor is sufficient because that gives you at least two, you know, because I don't wanna do a one and a half, it's no point. So, but council or whoever, the next thing I would like to ask, do you think we should through a city manager policy or through this itself?
My recommendation is that, you know, we take care of that now, and then that way, there's, you know, clear direction. And I think, to your point, Mayor Pro Tem, one-fifty, you know, is a good trigger point. And at that point, you know, come back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just wanted to clarify, so I guess wanted to confirm, once, whatever the threshold is, once that is hit, is the, that is the trigger requirement that after that, the, the contract must come to council after that one-fifty is hit?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, it can still be directly negotiated, not necessarily go off for bids. It just, contract needs to become after two bids for the same vendor.
And is this for the same kind of work? Because general contractors can do, you know, different kind of work. Is it for the same type of work? And then I guess the other question for council to consider is, when does that clock reset? Is that maybe a limit within every fiscal year?
Well, yeah, to me, I think it was a good point. I would suggest per vendor, not necessarily per project. So any vendor that hits two thresholds under direct contract needs to come back.
Mr. Mayor, a consideration that I just thought about, because if we define this too rigorously, we could end up in this spot. So let's just say we set the threshold of one-fifty. After the vendor hits one-fifty, everything must come to council, even if we directly negotiate it. What if somebody's at one-fifty-two and public works needs something that costs like fifty bucks? But that vendor's at one-fifty-two and we set the language too rigorously, and now we can't even get it from them because they're over. It's something simple and they're the best person to get it from. Let's say we know they got a good deal, we have a relationship. And so I do like the idea of a threshold, a kicker or trigger, whatever you wanna call it. But within the language for this threshold, can we consider adding language that says, all other contracts to this vendor past ten thousand, I don't know, past five thousand? So that it's still within our current sphere of what we are limiting, but not getting to the point where we can't even buy something for two-hundred bucks because we set too rigorous of a standard. You know what I mean? And I also think that we're gonna have to play with this over time. We're not experts on what type of stuff is being purchased from what vendor. And so, Joaquin, I know you mentioned if we wanna restrict to certain types of equipment, I don't think we have the expertise to provide insight on that. But I would like for us to play with this, take notes as things go on, and get to a point where maybe we can craft it a little cleaner. I would ask council to include this language in the actual ordinance. And if we can continue to amend with urgency ordinances, there seems like there's consensus to move on this front. And so I would be open to doing that on an urgency basis so that we're not having too many bureaucratic hurdles when amending.
So if I may, just for clarity, I'm looking at, in the ordinance, and this section is in both ordinances, so we can entertain this. I'm looking at section one-dash-twenty-one-dash-ten, and that subsection B is where the city manager is authorized to execute all contracts, especially for the first tier or contracts that are let and awarded. So basically, the higher tier plus the lower ones. So I think in this particular section is where we can drop in the proposed threshold. And my proposal would be that for any given contractor, if the sum of their contracts within that first seventy-five thousand dollar tier, once the sum of those hit one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, then council approval will be required thereafter for those first tier seventy-five thousand dollar contracts. Is that fair? Does that capture what the council's considering?
I believe so, and then ideally with a little bit more nuance that wouldn't prevent purchases that are like twenty bucks or even a hundred bucks to not go through. Maybe we can set an extra kicker of five thousand or ten thousand before it would come back to council. Right.
I just wanna note that this includes the actual labor, the construction work, the installation, not just the particular stuff or the widget or the equipment. So I'm having a difficult time understanding that last part about the carve-out for the smaller purchases.
Definitely, and the reason why I'm focusing on those is because I'd anticipate that the more complicated construction projects that involve labor and all these other things would likely be expensive enough to the point where they need to come to us anyway. I just don't wanna handcuff us too much for those little things. Question for legal, is it okay to approve everything as is tonight so that we have a foundation and we can start streamlining some of this stuff? And then get some additional language into the ordinance as we move forward to amend as we're discussing?
So as to the urgency ordinance, the city council could consider that piece separately, provide direction for the city attorney's office to amend the regular ordinance and bring that back. That's one way to split it, or if the council needs more time, it could consider tabling the item.
So, you know, as I'm listening and analyzing, I was, I think you just mentioned something that, what I was thinking, I would like to see all of that language first. Print it, review it, because otherwise, we're gonna be approving something that might not be exactly the language that we, that all of us are talking about. And then that's already approved, because we said, we gave direction to staff and legal counsel. That's approved, let now, let's only work on this. But if some language is not exactly the way we're thinking of it right now, but if we just, not necessarily table it, but continue it, come back with all the language that we're talking about included, we review it, and then we just approve it all at once. You know, because I'm afraid that, not that there'll be mistakes on purpose done, but we're, I mean, we're humans, right? Once we have everything in front of us and we agree with the language, then, and I'm not sure how long will that take? I mean, if it's two weeks or if it's four weeks, I mean, we can just approve it at our next meeting. I mean, we've been without it this long, I mean, why not?
I'm open to that. I would ask City Attorney's Office, how much time would we expect this to take reasonably to come back with potential proposals?
Thank you. I think within the next, I'd say within two meetings, we could implement the recommended language with the, the trigger, so to speak. And I do wanna offer an alternative, and I, in talking with the city manager and with Anthony and staff, I know the smaller threshold is really a, an obstacle. I appreciate that. We've been doing it this way for so long. But I think that's been a point of frustration in executing projects and getting necessary construction repairs implemented. So this could alternatively be an iterative process where you do adopt something tonight. And one way I think you can look at it is, you could implement two things. One is a monthly report from the city manager on those piecemeal seventy-five thousand dollar threshold items. So you see, okay, for the month of December, where have all these smaller, smaller quotes, up to seventy-five thousand dollars gone to? And at that point, if you wanna provide direction to the city manager to spread the love, or however you wanna put it, that would be within your wherewithal. The second thing I wanna offer is, perhaps, maybe we can put something for in that first tier. If a single contract is between, say, fifty thousand and seventy-five thousand dollars, then those would have to come to council. So it could still bypass negotiation, but those higher, that higher proponent in that first tier would have to come to council, which would still be consistent with state law. But I wanted to offer that simply because practically, I, in speaking with staff, I know, kind of serving the public and getting repairs and, and construction executed and delivering projects to the public has been frustrated by not having upga available.
So I did hear you, I think I heard you say probably within the next couple of meetings, which would be in a month or a month. And something else that you mentioned was, if I listened correctly, was to potentially include some language to, or instead of quarterly reports, it would be a monthly report from the city manager's office in regards, including a report on any of those items above the threshold. Was that correct?
Let me clarify, so in the interest of trying to get something adopted this evening, if that's the council's desire, the, it could be sort of, before we determine a threshold, let's see what the practice looks like when it's actually executed. But you could have a reporting to where the city manager comes back to you every month and says, for example, in the month of January, here are all the projects, here are all the contracts we executed and let for seventy-five thousand dollars or less. And then within that monthly report, you would see, okay, this pavement contract went over here. This sewer project went to this plumbing company over here. So that you would be able to see every month where these contracts are going to. And then with that information, you could just provide direction to the city manager to spread the scope of where these contracts are going. And you can give policy direction to him, but still maintaining what is before you in the ordinance. I think that's, that's an outside-the-ordinance administrative way, just to see how in practice this actually looks. And maybe there aren't the concerns in reality that the council may be having at this point, once things are implemented and in play.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Joaquin, thanks for the context. I think, I think there's consensus on the council to generally move in this direction, and what you presented is a viable option. However, I am very interested in, and I think other members of the council are also interested in getting some form of trigger in at some point, whether we do that by approving. getting some form of trigger in at some point, whether we do that by approving this tonight as-is and then seeing what you said and getting it in later, or just continuing until we get that language. And so what I would ask is, if we're going to move to a point where we're going to amend, whether, if we approve as-is tonight and we decide to amend, let's just say within two months or three months, are there any foreseen hurdles there, or what would be the recommendation if we approve tonight to best handling a potential amendment? And then what is also the timeline for that?
Thank you. So, and let me just go back to the recommendations and why we have both an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance. So, it's a belt-and-suspender's approach because should for whatever reason, someone would want to challenge the urgency ordinance, the regular ordinance would still be moving along the first reading and second reading for adoption. And any concerns with the urgency ordinance, for example, with the findings and the sufficiency, those would be moot because the urgency ordinance by that time would already have been adopted because you're still following the regular ordinance for second, first reading, second reading, et cetera. So as a practical matter, I think you should always have, at least in this instance, where I think the urgency findings and urgency ordinance are substantiated, you have them both moved together, the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance. So it would be the same approach, council member up all, if we do something in January or February to implement some cleanup, to insert a trigger, or make any other changes that you may want to see at that point.
Thank you for that. So, given that it's going to take some time regardless to evaluate these changes, if there's not going to be any big hurdles with changing the language later and amending the ordinance in the same manner, I'm okay with us approving tonight as-is. I mean, any of our concerns that we have about triggers and all this other stuff is likely not going to hit within the next three months anyway. That's more of a annual perspective. And so if council's open to approving tonight as-is, keeping tabs on this and making sure that we can review language as we're moving forward and consider amendments in two to three months, I'm happy to approve both ordinances tonight.
And I apologize for interjecting again, Mayor and Council. Just as an accompaniment to that, the regular ordinance would still be coming back. If everything gets approved tonight, the regular ordinance would still be coming back on consent calendar for second reading at your next regular meeting. And in addition, you can also give direction, again, to the city manager to, under his ability to implement and promulgate policies that relate to the ordinance, you can give a direction to, for triggers and things of that sort through that process as well. So there will be opportunities to provide further feedback in that regard. Thank you.
What I can say, honestly, I feel like I, I'm not sure that I will be able to support this at this time, for the reasons I mentioned. I would feel more comfortable coming back with the language already, with the full language already on paper before I approve anything, but the decision is up to the majority of the council.
Well, actually, it's up to the entire council because it takes four fifths, not just a simple majority, it takes four fifths. So if you're not for it, which I kind of changed my mind to go and support it, like Councilor Rupel presented, and look at, come back to look at it later, you know, because I'm okay with that, but now if... Yeah, so, Mr. Rupel, do you want to make that motion? Oh, before we do that, Mr. Mayor, should we open the public?
I was ready for you guys to complete your comments. All right, so at this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any citizen comments on the phone at 8:36? Hearing none, coming back into the chamber. Is there any citizen comments in the chamber in regards to this item? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 8:36, bringing it back to the dais.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I believe Joaquin mentioned that it makes sense to keep these moving together, and so if you're not comfortable with moving forward on the urgency ordinance tonight, Joaquin, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're suggesting that we then just review the language and bring them both back together again, rather than have a majority of us approve the first ordinance and not approve the urgency ordinance?
I think they should move together. It's not necessary, hypothetically, three votes can approve the regular ordinance, but four votes are required for the urgency ordinance. And for the regular ordinance, state law requires that you do a subsequent second reading, and then the ordinance takes effect 30 days after the second reading. So the urgency ordinance really solves things more immediately. But if you, if there is entertainment of what is before you this evening, I would strongly recommend as far as implementing some control for review in the ordinance is to, in the section I mentioned, 1-21-10, is to have that mandatory monthly report from the city manager. So to the extent you approve something right away, the urgency ordinance, if there are four votes, would become effective immediately. So, you know, within a month, the city manager can come and give you a report on, within $75,000, what contract went to who, and then you could provide further direction and, you know, either give direction for the city manager to make policy and procedural changes just through his administrative regulations and procedures, or if we want to go, you know, on the more intense side, we could come back and modify the ordinance to address those, if that's necessary. But I think there's enough flexibility within the city manager's administrative regulations and procedures that he can implement to get council direction and address those concerns that may arise if you want to see how things look in practice, if things are adopted this evening.
Joaquin, that's a great recommendation, but again, it doesn't look like there's four votes to pass the urgency ordinance, through which we would be able to implement these managerial policies that you are referencing. And so given that that's the case, if there's not four votes tonight, the recommendation would be to approve these together moving forward whenever they come back?
Yes, thank you. So I would recommend, perhaps not at the next meeting, but, you know, two meetings down the line, at the earliest, both ordinances and the resolution before you could come back with the trigger language proposed in the ordinances. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to clarify, is your position still the same that you prefer all of them come at once, or is that still your position?
Yes, and I think that based on his, Joaquin's last recommendation, we can approve both of them at the same time, instead of doing one first and then come back and approve both of them.
Okay, thank you. I think Councilor Rupel is right. If there's, there's one dissent, we can't move forward anyway, so there's no point in going, so...
We need to put it to the vote and admit it on the record, that's official vote then.
And if I may, Mayor, just procedurally, I would recommend that since this is a public hearing, that if there's a desire to continue this, that you continue the public hearing to a date uncertain, and then that would allow the city manager to bring this back when things are ready to go and present back to council. Thank you.
Joaquin, to confirm, you would like for us to include a date within our motion to bring this public hearing back?
And I'm sorry, you can do that, or you can say a date uncertain, and then that would give the city manager leeway to bring it back when things are ready to go. There's more flexibility that way, I think. Thank you.
If that's the case, council, I will motion to continue the public hearing to a date uncertain at the discretion of the city manager.
So we have a motion on the floor by, well, do we have to go through the motions, right? Okay. By Councilmember Rupel, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Wallace. Roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Rupel?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pachamama?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passed as by voter four, silver.
Next, we have item number eight, discussion and potential action items. Item 8.1, resolution one, authorizing the city manager to enter into a 36-month contract with FLOC safety for additional automated license plate readers, known as ALPR, not to exceed $90,000 for the contract, $30,000 for fiscal year 2025, 2026, $30,000 for fiscal year 2026, 2027, and $30,000 for fiscal year 2027, 2028.
Good evening, council again. And I just, first of all, I want to say thank you for letting us come back and have a discussion on this. It's very important that we try to get this moving with the FLOC. And as I promised from the last meeting, I have a representative from FLOC. I'd like to introduce Lily Ho, the Public Affairs Manager, sitting to my right, and she will be going over a presentation. And just like I promised last time as well, she should be able to answer any other questions that I wasn't able to last time. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Hello, city council members. Hello, mayors. It's a pleasure to be here with you. Thank you for having us. I am Lily Ho. I am the Public Affairs Manager for FLOC Safety, and it's a pleasure to be able to talk about our products. We have a brief presentation. I hope that, oops, this is not, well, it's fine. It says Shasta County, but I might have sent you the wrong one. My apologies. It should be similar. Okay, no problem. I didn't realize that that was going to be the one. Okay. I think a lot of your questions may be answered in this presentation, but after the presentation, I'm happy to respond to any additional questions that you have. This is the clicker, correct? Oh, correct. Great. Terrific. Okay. About FLOC Safety, we are, we started as a license plate reader technology company. It was started by our CEO, Garrett, and our first customer was his neighborhood. He, his neighborhood was seeing an uptick in burglaries, and he provided his police officers with footage from his Ring cameras, and they basically said it wasn't really useful. There were no leads around it. And he looked into it and learned that license plate reader technology has been around since the 70s, but it's never been done in a way where it's been affordable, and the hardware wasn't necessarily there. And he has a technology background, and he sought to create a better device for license plate readers, and here we are. His first customer was his own HOA. And since then, we found that law enforcement, there was a demand for it in law enforcement, specifically because recruitment, retention, and retirement challenges are nationwide. And this tool provides a technology that helps reduce the time it takes for police officers to investigate cases, because we are able to provide them with an objective, actionable piece of evidence, from our license plate readers. Police departments are turning to technology as a force multiplier nationwide. It's not just license plate readers, but other things as well, and radios, as you guys discussed earlier. Seventy percent of crimes have a vehicle involved, and we are trusted in over 6,000 communities across the country. Our hope is that we can help police officers do a better job without replacing them. Now, the license plate readers, what are they? They are a device mounted on a pole about 12 to 14 feet high, and it's focused on public roadways, and they take photos of license plates. They operate 24/7 with solar power and a battery backup. They are at a fixed location. They do not track vehicles continuously, and the pictures are specifically a time and a place and a location. We provide an objective, actionable evidence that enables police officers to be more effective. Like I said, 70% of crimes have a vehicle involved, and when a vehicle is involved in a crime, your officers can upload a license plate or a vehicle description, and you would be alerted within seconds after the vehicle passes by one of our FLOC cameras. For law enforcement, we're also integrated with real-time alerts from the FBI and CIC database, which has stolen vehicles, NICMIC, which is the Amber Alert, and custom hot lists that your own police department can create. Our system is not connected to the DMV. They do not hold any personal, PII, personal identifiable information, and we do not write traffic citations. This is an image of a picture, very standard of what you, what our cameras would take here in Livingston. It is the rear of a vehicle, and it has the license plate number, the make and model of the car can be identified. Again, they do not take pictures of the driver. There is no facial recognition. There's no traffic enforcement. And what's special about our technology is we also have something called a vehicle fingerprint. So in the situation of a crime, the victim may not remember the license plate number, may not even see it, or maybe they will only catch a few numbers, not the entire plate. Maybe it was an O or a zero, it's unclear. But the victim may identify it was a red truck with a bike rack. And those are identifiers that you can put into our system that can, that would also bring up, you know, a red truck with a bike rack. This is, it also comes with night vision, so these are photos that are, they work at night as well. Again, they're solar-powered devices. All of the installation and maintenance is included, along with permitting assistance. We want this to be a very light lift for cities. Our devices also include data storage and lifetime hardware and software upgrades. And we're built with privacy in mind. We take privacy and data protection incredibly seriously. First of all, all of the data is owned by the city of Livingston. You will own the data. You get to decide who you want to share this data with. We will never actually provide access to your data without your permission. Additionally, we, again, we don't have any personal PII, personalized identifiable information, but we do treat it with a seriousness as if it does. So we are, all data is stored with end-to-end encryption. FBI C just certified SOC 2, SOC 3, HIPAA, and everything else. We like to say that we're more secure than most of the city halls that we come to speak at. After 30 days, all of the data is wiped, and that's the standard 30 days. And you can choose to have that extended beyond 30 days or less than 30 days. But it is up to you, how long you would like to store the data. This is a transparency portal that comes also free of charge with our product, and this is a public-facing information page for your stakeholders. The, it includes who you're sharing with, their prohibited and acceptable uses, the sharing agreements with other agencies. It's also customizable. You can link to your department policies as well. We've also, we are also a software company where we have created additional features We've also, we are also a software company where we have created additional features to ensure more compliance. So in the state of California, there is no sharing with federal agencies. So in order to ensure that there are no mistakes or accidents that are made by your law enforcement, we have just blocked it off entirely so that there is no option for you to accidentally share with federal agencies. Additionally, we have included search filters. In the state of California, you're not allowed to search for immigration or reproductive health reasons. And so when the request is made for searching of a vehicle license, your police officers may include the case numbers and a reason for the search. And if anything around immigration or reproductive health comes up, nothing will come up. We're really proud to have some really great trusted partners, and this includes Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, NICMCC, which is the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. Our technology has, our products has been, have been able to solve over 1,000 missing people and over 100 missing children. We have also had the endorsement of the NAACP in Oakland. The NAACP identifies our product as something that reduces bias, because we are giving your law enforcement an objective piece of evidence. And we're in over 400 law enforcement agencies across the state of California. And in it, we're routinely solving crimes. In this situation, this was an arson case in Yucaya. After a fire was sparked, our cameras identified a vehicle that was near the fire as it started, and, and police were able to make an arrest. This one is an attempted kidnapping on Fairfield. Teenage victim was, someone tried to drag her into a vehicle. A passerby intervened and identified the vehicle, and the description of the vehicle was put into our license plate reader cameras. And within hours, we were able to locate that vehicle and the suspect. Silver alerts are pretty common. In this situation, someone went missing after church, and we were able to track him as soon as he re-entered the country. He trailed off into Mexico and came back. And as soon as he came back, we, he was able to be assisted by the police and reunited with his family. I'm going to turn it over to the chief if there's anything that I didn't cover, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. So again, you know, a lot of good information there. I think there were some, some things that I didn't hit on last time. But like I said before, Lily is here to answer any questions that you have. I know I've wanted also to thank a few that I've met with and taken the time to educate yourself as well, so I appreciate a couple of the council members coming in and doing that.
Thank you. Counsel, at this time, you have any questions?
I have some, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, or whoever, the plastic covers that people put over their back license plates, this system still reads that. It doesn't protect them, correct? They think it does, but it does not, right?
Yeah, so you're talking about the, the plastic cover that people put over. So unless they have some kind of obstruction on it, yes, we're still able to, to read that. It does depend, however, though, if the glare is, catches the light on it perfectly. It can be unreadable or partial, I've noticed, but for the most part, we can still read it.
And then my other question, chief, would have been, we had a, a report about a, a white Toyota, I believe it was, that hit a couple parked cars in the last two or three weeks. I remember seeing that posted. The Flock camera would not have been able to identify that, would it? Or would it, who, could the police at this level, could you have put in that white timeframe and gone back and looked for that vehicle that supposedly hit the parked cars here in town? I forget what street it was on.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a, that's actually a perfect scenario that you come up with that we did have. Depending on where the cameras are, currently, we only have 18, so that only has about nine areas, because you figure there's two cameras to each area, so 19 is really only nine. Currently, we have most of our ingress and egress within the city. We don't have any residential areas, but officers could run that vehicle for a specific timeframe. But if it didn't go through one of our areas where we have the cameras, they might have not had any luck on that. So we would revert to any kind of personal cameras, any kind of Ring doorbell cameras, things like that, or surveillance is helpful. And I think that's where one of the leads came from, I believe.
From a Ring camera?
Yes, from a Ring camera. Correct.
Thank you. One more question. The presentation mentioned an audit usage. I would strongly support to the council that we set up some sort of an audit of this, maybe once every 60 days, somebody would be able to audit it with the chief, just so we know and have a presentation if the council would be interested in something like that. I have no other questions.
Yeah, just to add to that, so as Lily was talking about, there is a citizen portal that we'll be utilizing. We're currently in the, in the process of setting that up for the citizens, where it actually talks about who we share the information with currently, which I showed, I showed some of you that. I think currently, we're at about 210 other agencies that we share with that are local municipalities and counties. But yeah, that will, that will be on that portal that they can look at, and I think if you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. You can post your audits on that transparency portal. And at whatever frequency you would like your policies to. The audit information would include, so the audit trail lives forever. The data, the photos are deleted after 30 days or whatever it is that you choose to use, but the audit trails will live forever. So and that information is what is searched, who searched it, the reason for search.
So another question, I was reading some recent articles in regards to some new laws in California where the state of California, and then maybe you can correct me, and I'm not sure if you know, are aware, were the, the new laws that were recently passed in the state of California that actually prevent, prevent agencies or anyone that uses this system to share information with the federal, with any federal agency?
Correct. That is correct.
So that doesn't, that would be an additional, I guess, safeguard, at least in California. I'm, I'm not sure about any other state, but I know, I think there were two recent laws passed.
Yes, that's, that's correct. So other states can share in, but we cannot share out. And there is no way that your police officers can accidentally share to a federal agency. We've just, we've put in the specific guardrails for the state for all of the customers within the state of California. We fenced them in so that there's, there will not be any accidents. You guys will not be in trouble.
Okay.
If I can also add on that, so I am the administrator for the Flock cameras, and currently, we have a 50-mile radius. Anything beyond 50 miles, we will not share with. They do not have access to it. A good example, if we were to share with that, would be like, for example, LAPD, if they called because they had a kidnapping suspect, they had a plate that came back to Livingston. If they called, they would have to talk to me directly and give a reason why they want it, and then I could approve it at that point. But we do not share beyond 50 miles right now with agencies.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
Thank you, Chief, and Lily appreciates you coming out. I read through the whole thing. The only thing I did not get, what does NC, I think it stands for National Crime, but what does NCIC stand for?
So that's the National Communications Intelligence Center? So that's basically the search, if we do any kind of search in our database, any kind of hits for missing stolen vehicles, that type of stuff.
So if NCIC, using the acronym that you said, reported a stolen license plate, stolen vehicle, I should say, it would come into your system, it would alert one of our folks here?
So as far as on the Flock system you're talking? So if there's an alert on that license plate, yes.
Be it Amber Alert or whatever happens to be stolen?
Yeah, if there's, if there's an Amber Alert for a child, or like she talked about, Silver Alert, which is for...
Or Silver Alert, you know?
Yeah, correct.
I'm quickly approaching, but you know?
Yeah. So yeah, so yes, those hits do come on. I, I know that over the last two and a half years that we've had Flock, I've been here, gosh, almost 28 years now, and in my 28 years, there's been one officer that's obtained the 10851 California vehicle code pin, which is a certain number of stolen vehicles. And just in the last couple of years, we've had a couple of officers now obtain that award, you know, with the assistance of the Flock.
Okay, and, and this is hypothetical, okay? Say, you say we have a 50-mile radius, beyond that, we don't share information. I mean, we do, but it would have to go to the chief for approval or over, right?
Yes, so currently, like I said, I'm the administrator for that. I am in the current role of interim. Once my time is done with that or is extended...
Whoever the administrator is would be responsible, I mean, as far as the chief.
Yes, they, they are the ones that allow. The scenario I gave is anybody beyond 50, 50 miles, then, you know, they need to call and pretty much have a specific reason for that. And we can, we can set the limits on that. I chose 50 miles because I think that was just kind of within our county and a couple of the counties over.
Now, I'm going to show my age. There's a fictional city in Green Acres called Hooterville. Say it happens to be 38 miles from here, they request the information. What keeps them from handing that information to somebody else?
Yeah, I, I can answer that. It, there is no daisy chain. So they, they may, we may, sorry, Livingston may share with that town, but that town does not share Livingston's to anybody else.
Is there some sort of state or some prohibition for that?
It is just the technology. It doesn't share beyond.
Okay, but, all right. Say that I'm calling from Hooterville, and I get that, and I say, give me this information, vehicle, you send it to me. Now I have it. So who becomes the, who, who has the data now? Does it still reside on you, or do they actually have a copy of it now?
No, so they're able to view our cameras. The data still belongs to us now. They could, if they, I guess if we went scenario-wise, they could take a picture of, of the Flock camera and send it to whoever they wanted. But each agency and on the Flock itself, there's parameters, there's policies, like we talked about earlier with our citizen one that we'll have, we'll have our policy on it. Every agency has a policy that they're not to share that information. It's, it's kind of no different than if I run a, somebody's license plate or a driver's license number, and I have an, an agent from another agency sitting next to me, they could pretty much do the same thing if they wanted.
No, I'm really concerned about the, who's the custodian of the data, you know? The Flock says they don't have it, or they don't have access to it. You do it, you send it to them. Now, in which format do they receive the data?
So they're, they're able to view the data themselves.
They can actually view the camera?
Yes, yes, correct. Which, which is, which is the license plate or the vehicle. Now, that officer, that agent that just checked it and sees the physical photograph, they now have to run, run it in their Kletz, which logs it. For instance, if somebody was to use it for the wrong reasons, that would be through their database, through their system, such as you mentioned Whoville. They have their own databases, and they can be searched and audited on, that'd be on them. We would not give them the registration, the owner's information, their address. That would be on them to do their own check through their own database, not through ours.
And then it was also mentioned, and say that now you're at 51 miles. They can't, they don't have access to the data anymore because they're outside of the radius.
As, as far as the sharing goes, I did...
Now, if somebody at 51 miles in another city says, hey, Livingston, we need this, what information do we require before we give them that data?
So right now, there's really nothing set in stone. I know for me myself, they're going to have to have a crime that's been committed. So if they have like a robbery, and it does show the reason for the search, even the, even the agencies that are within 50 miles, 38, 40, I can go back and audit why they looked at our camera. There's a case number, as we mentioned earlier, anytime you do a search, there's got to be a reason, a case number incident attached to it.
And, and we, we do require that, right? All three, all four?
Yes, correct.
And it isn't, it isn't our policy?
Yes, they would have to have legitimate reason to ask for our cameras and access to them.
And when, when they request it, is that request saved somewhere? Hey, this agency made that request?
Yes, it has a date and, and time that it was requested. I can also remove the agency. So if I feel that an agency really doesn't use it, or they just need it at the one time, we can also remove them at any time.
Okay, and... Well, thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Counsel, are there any more questions in regards to this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
No questions for chief or a rep who came out here. Thanks for coming out here and sitting through two hours of procurement before we got to this. I do have some information I'd like to present. If it's working, I prepared some slides on my perspective on this, and it looks like it is. I would like to say, again, thanks to chief for meeting with me and answering a lot of my questions on this. I had some similar data concerns that were mentioned. I think a lot of those have been answered. However, I have fundamental issues with this technology being in place and other technology being in place in our country, and I kind of want to run through that to explain why I feel the way I feel. I don't believe in surveillance as a tool for crime prevention and/or solving. I believe it to be an infringement of Fourth Amendment rights that protect against unreasonable search and seizure. I would wish to see, and I don't think we have the capacity to do this at a city level, but I would wish to see much stronger approaches to preventing crime, namely fixing socioeconomic conditions in communities, larger levels of investment in people and not capital. And I know we can't do any of that, but I say that to, to provide some insight on my perspective and why I feel the way I feel. I, I would like to run through what I believe is mass surveillance in our world and what this kind of contributes to, just to paint a perspective for the mindset that I'm bringing into this. And Monica, if you can go to the next slide, please, and I'll relay some information. So mass surveillance generally is widespread monitoring of an entire or significant portion of a population, which is often conducted by governments or corporations who then collect and analyze that. We have huge levels of surveillance in America, not just in, by governments, but by corporations. If we could go to the next slide. So this is not just happening, but it's actually legal. After the Patriot Act was passed in 2001, there's a specific section, Section 215, which allowed the, the federal government to collect on a daily basis phone records of millions of Americans. This is phone calls that you're making, the conversation, the time you called, the person you called, when it was dialed, when it was received. And it's my understanding that this data has been being collected by the federal government for the last 24 years since this act was passed. I believe that to be a huge infringement of the Fourth Amendment. And Monica, if you can go to the next slide, please. There was actually a whistleblower who blew the whistle on some of these mass surveillance programs that the United States government was conducting by the name of Edward Snowden. He's a former staffer at the National Security Agency. The NSA revealed mass surveillance that was occurring as a result of the Patriot Act. He was charged for espionage by the government for this, has since then not been able to come back to the country. However, and if we can go to the next slide, actually, there was supposed to be something else that I didn't add. This was brought to federal courts. There's court documents on this that, where a court found that this is a crime by the government. They are not allowed to be spying on us in the manner which they are, essentially vindicating Snowden's claims. But the surveillance continues at a federal level. Now with big tech, this was mentioned last time, we were having this discussion about our phones. The tracking that's done by Samsung, Apple, Facebook... The tracking that's done by Samsung, Apple, Facebook, Twitter, any corporation that you pick. And it's almost this idea of, oh, this is already happening, so it's okay. To me, it's, none of this is okay. Not only should the United States government not be spying on us, but these tech companies should not be spying on us. This data should not be allowed to be collected. It is an infringement of Fourth Amendment rights and people should not be constantly spied on. But there is not only a normalization, but a, a strong hunger at a public and private institutional level to know where we're at at all times, who we're talking to, how we spend time, and then to sell that data. And I know Flock's not doing that specifically, and I really appreciate the information you presented on them. However, I, I do feel like this normalization is, is not okay. I, I don't believe in a world where that exists. And this is a report where our Federal Trade Commission identified a lot of these issues that I put out here. Monica, if you go to the next slide, please. There's an organization out there called Dflock.me. It's people who likely feel the way I feel. They track Flock surveillance cameras around the country to make sure that people know that they exist in their communities. I didn't know they existed in Livingston until we brought this item in June, which I did vote for. By the way, I did vote for an approval of these cameras at that time. And they feel like it's important to track these cameras nationally. And if we can go to the next slide. This is a clip of Flock CEO discussing this organization, Dflock.me. I mean, I would really appreciate if we could play this at the timestamp of 12:40.
Can one company help eradicate the most crime in America in just one decade?
And if you could, really quickly, before you play that, for the record, this is in response to a question of how the CEO feels about this organization.
And then unfortunately, there's terroristic organizations like Dflock, whose primary motivation is chaos. They are closer to Antifa than they are anything else. And that, I think, is unfortunate because we don't want chaos, or I don't want chaos.
And can we pause right there, please? I know that was a little low, but essentially the CEO said there are terrorist organizations like Dflock who want chaos, and they're closer to Antifa than they are. And so just, just a couple of points, I think that's an insane comment for somebody in that position to make. I don't consider this to be a terroristic organization. I actually think it to be an organization that promotes public transparency, so people know they're not being spied on. Obviously, he has an incentive to say that, given that they threaten his business model, but it definitely rubbed me the wrong way to hear that from the person that's in charge of, of running this company at a national level. And if we can go to the next slide, please. For the sake of time, I'm not going to ask that this video be played, but I encourage you to go check out this Forbes interview yourself if you'd like. There's a clip from the CEO in the same interview where he's talking about how there's already 100 different forms of surveillance, so what's the issue with having Flock? Again, I, I think that's a big problem that we have 100 different forms of surveillance. Why are we normalizing that? Why is it okay for us to constantly be tracked? And I really want you to consider the mindset of the person that is pushing aside at a national level. If we can get to the next slide, please. So this, these are examples of Flock being weaponized. And I do want to be clear here. You are going, the same way I can present these is the same way that we can present success stories. The reality is, is that there are going to be humans that make mistakes, that may abuse this technology, and then we're going to have people like Chief Ramirez who legitimately want the best for the city and want to be responsive to our residents and make sure that we can solve crimes. But I'll, I'll explain my rationale for including this a little bit towards the end. This is an example from the city of Denver where there was a lady who was accused of theft because of information that was found by Flock cameras. It turns out she wasn't even at the place where she was accused to be at the time, and she had to prove her own innocence. Thankfully, she was able to provide information on where she was and why she didn't do what she did. But I'm of the opinion that an innocent civilian should never be put in this situation, especially not through surveillance. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is a quote from the person that handled this in Denver. Quote, "You know we have cameras in that town. You can't get a breath of fresh air in or out of that place without us knowing." Again, this is not going to be the mindset of every officer that touches this. I'm not accusing this to be the mindset of the officers in Livingston. It's just something to consider when enabling this level of technology. Now, if we can go to the next slide. Here's a police chief who tracked his ex-girlfriend 164 times using license plate cams. Flock is, has a huge database. They have a huge network around the country, and this theoretically is something that's possible, depending on who is approving the usage of data and who's looking for it. And if we can go to the next slide. Another example of, of someone convicted on stalking charges through the use of Flock cameras. There is strong potential for weaponization of this. And we, I strongly ask that you consider that before moving forward and coming to a conclusion on how you feel about these cameras being in town. If we can go to the next slide. Would like to present the Fourth Amendment because I, I do think there's constitutional issues here. I'm not aware of any specific lawsuits where Flock or any public agency that's implemented Flock has been sued on Fourth Amendment grounds. But the first line is, is clear. The right of people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures. And the reality is, is that when we have these cameras around town, we are tracking people that have not done anything wrong a lot of the time. Even if it's not being weaponized against them, even if we are doing everything right on our end, it is tracking, it is surveillance, and I do think that crosses the bounds of an unreasonable search. And if we can go to the next slide, which is the last one. This is more of a philosophy than anything. I don't expect the rest of the council to take this on, but this is something that I truly believe. We don't have to use the number 100, I'm open to a, a different threshold there, but quote from Benjamin Franklin. "It is better to let 100 criminals go free than to imprison one innocent man." And I think that is so relevant to the conversation of due process, of individual liberty, especially with the way that due process has been torn apart by the federal government today. I am not comfortable having technology that is actively tracking all of our citizens. I, I think it enables a mindset and a concept of surveillance that has been implemented, again, institutionally at a public and private level across the country. I'm not comfortable with any of it. So it's not just about Flock personally within the city of Livingston. It's about the concept of surveillance as a whole to address issues in society and to potentially just profit off of. Again, not saying that's coming from you, but the concept that exists. It's something that frustrates me deeply. I can't control what's going on at the rest of the country. I cannot control our state or federal lawmakers putting better systems in place that may prevent crime in the first place. But I do have a say on whether or not we have tracking of our own citizens in town and if we enable some form of surveillance. And for me, this is a lot more ideological than it is practical. Chief, again, I want to reiterate the fact that I don't have concerns with the way that you specifically are going to use this technology. And I have no evidence of the fact that PD has weaponized this technology at any point, but I have an ideological stance against surveillance. I don't see it as a solution to our problems, and I will not be supporting the resolution tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any other questions before I go out for public comment?
Yeah, thank you for your shared, Councilman Rupel, I really appreciate it. You and I are aligned in a lot of ways in this. I always say the old example of years and years ago, I can't remember the exact date, I let my brother use my car. He was in LA, ran a red light. That's fine, it's, it's not right, but it happened. He took a plate, license plate of the car, which was registered to me, and had a photo of the driver. Because the car, it didn't care who the driver was, it only cared who was registered as a vehicle owner. I, I get a ticket in the mail, and I looked at it and I sent a license, copy of my driver license, it says, "I am not the driver." They wouldn't buy it, they said, "I have to come and prove there." So, but that means I had to prove my innocence. Not, not that they had to prove that I'm guilty, but I had to prove that I'm not the driver, when they wouldn't even accept my driver license compared to the photo. To me, technology can be abused that way. And that goes into proving that you have to be innocent, not, you know, you have to prove you're innocent, not necessarily prove you're guilty. So I do have concerns with those, those kind of things. Now, this one, I don't know. I, I do question a lot of, you know... Should we do that and does somebody have to prove they're innocent? I don't know if a single license plate is going to be built on the entire case. You can't say that crime was committed and here's a vehicle. Well, there was a fire. Unless you see a video of somebody doing it, you could have five cars drive by that place. Which of the five cars started the fire? I don't know, it makes it hard to prove sometimes. So it does have a little bit of it that way because they're not really using the photo of the driver. All right, so I'm not sure which way I'm going to go on this. I, I am a technology person. One thing for chief, this setting, Flock isn't, isn't the only system out there, there are others. I believe there's Ricardis, there's others that do the same thing. They don't do that? Only Flock is the only one?
There are others that no one here has given.
No, I, I understand. Yeah, thank you, Lily, yeah, but the point I was trying to make, Flock system has safeguards. They're subject to the Senate bill, says data can't be shared and all that. But chief, do you know if other systems are restricted to the same?
So the Flock system, one of the biggest reasons why we have the Flock in Livingston is because it integrates with our Axon, which is our body cams and our vehicle cameras. So it's the only system that integrates with that. If you look at Ricardis, like she mentioned, it's surveillance. Vigilant does not communicate with their Axon, so that's one of the reasons why we have the Flock.
No, the question I was asked is, are they, are other systems subject to the same rules?
I, I'm not sure about other systems. I know as far as the, as Mr. Moran was talking about, the surveillance, I know that's all across the board, so I'm sure any other system such as Vigilant is, is under the same guidelines.
All right, thanks, chief. You know, and this is really, really difficult to do that. And as a comment to, and again, to Councilman Rupel, you know, you're right. Facebook, Google, everybody's tracking us. I don't know how many of you guys gone to a supermarket or something. If you don't set your security setting straight, all of a sudden you get a, something pop up on your phone and say, "Walmart's having a sale," you just happen to be in a Walmart because they know exactly where you're at now. So, you know, but those are private companies, so I don't know what we're going to do. So, I don't know, I'm kind of conflicted on how I'm going to go with this. So I would like to hear from our other council members, and the mayor, of course.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Rupel. I appreciate your presentation. I completely disagree. I think the Flock system should be maintained in the city. It's proved its worth. I'm comfortable with the way it's being handled here in the city. I see no abuse. I don't consider it an infringement on my rights because they got to have a reason to look for that, my license plate. So, no, I would be 100% in supporting this motion to approve.
Thank you. You know, I, when we first started, thinking of the first time to install these cameras, I was the main supporter. And I think since then, it's, it's been demonstrated that it's, it's been very positive to the outcome that these cameras have had. And, you know, we can go into details, so just to, and then again, I don't know everything and every case that these cameras have been used then to solve potential crimes. But, you know, it's, and I do appreciate the presentation and, 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 you know, the perspective that some people might be normalizing, you know, being, I guess, watched in everything we do. I, I, I do agree with you in not agreeing that it's, that technology sometimes is used the wrong way. But, you know, it's cell phones, I mean, you provided some examples of how this could be used the wrong way. I mean, just like with cell phones or guns or, you know, even Ring cameras. But I've been wait, you know, trying to put it in a balance, you know, the benefits, the pros and the cons. And although I do agree with you on, on not being a supporter of how certain agencies use certain technology, and, you know, just thinking about our little, our small community of Livingston, I, I think I would be more inclined to support this and because it has shown positive results. Is there a risk of, are we concerned about, you know, how this technology might be used improperly? Yes, of course, you know, I think all of us can agree with that. And I think that is why we're here tonight. Otherwise, we would have either approved it or not approved it last time. But, you know, just, I think there's some safeguards there. It's probably not going to be perfect, just like with everything else. I, you know, I just saw some Flock cameras down 140 driving to Los Banos in Gastine. I didn't even knew they were there. Lowe's, Home Depot, Amazon, FedEx, they, you know, actually, I'm not sure about Walmart, but probably, you know, they have them or not, or they're probably using the made in China ones, but, you know, just, I'm just joking, just. But, you know, I, I think at this point, I will be in support of this item to approve additional cameras to be installed. But at this time, I would go, I would like to go out for public comment. And I, is there any public comment on the phone in regards to this item, 9:30?
Here and now, coming back to, into the chamber, is there any citizen comments in the chamber in regards to this item? Yes, you can come up to the podium, please. And if you can state your name for the record again.
Yeah, my name is Patricia Zamora. Yeah, this was a very interesting conversation, and I really appreciated, Councilman Upal, you taking the time to present another perspective. Because in the times we're in, a lot of different perspectives are... There has to be a place to have different perspectives, to be able to find a better solution for our community. So that was intriguing to me to see that. I've never seen that before, and I, I do appreciate that. As a citizen, I think when I come to these meetings, it's also, you know, in my heart that we're here working together. And we have to listen. I want to listen, and I have mixed feelings about this also, living in, in Chicago and in San Francisco and bigger cities where a lot of things are at a big level. And you really see how when people are more and more disconnected, when they don't know their neighbors, when they don't know... when they don't know people in their community, how that really harms, causes a lot of harm. And I think I'm not against technology. It's also always how it's used and to what purpose. So it's not so much to give a comment because at this point, you know, there's a lot of pros and cons either way. But I do agree that it cannot be a substitute for community connection. Cameras will never connect us. Walking down the street, I was a club member, Boys and Girls Club Director in San Francisco. I worked in the Tenderloin, which is one of the most, that's one of the most, if you go into San Francisco, you walk through the TL, it's a very, very high concentration of crime. So every day when I walk through, and I live right in the neighborhood, some of the ways I kept safe is, and in Chicago, I worked in the Pilsen, which is also a port of entry for immigrants. Some of the best protection was actually the kids, even the kids that were in the street life. I didn't even know they would be protecting my car because they knew that I was trying to do something in the community with them. And same thing in the TL, you know, you have to be, we're not naive. But I do feel like, you know, when you walk down the street, we, even in a big city, we knew people who ran the local supermarkets, the families, if you needed. We had a program where if you felt unsafe, the business would identify places where it's called Safe Haven. We started a program called Tenderloin Safe Passage Program. All resident-led, where you would train parents and so forth, young people around safety. So I think it's not if or or, but if it's, we can't just rely on it for that. So I would really underscore what you're saying around how are we investing in the people so that we can do better together.
Thank you. Is there any additional citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing now, closing the citizen comments on 9:34, bringing it back to the dais. Council, are there any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor Protem, when you got that ticket in the mail, did you make your brother pay the ticket? Because he knew it was your car and you lent it to him.
Well, just for clarification, he saw the frustration in me and he wrote a letter, says he's not the driver I am, but...
Wait, you're saying he's better or you're better?
No, he actually knows the wrath of the older brother. And he says, no, I will, I will send a copy of my license and I will take care of it. So I didn't have to actually drive to LA, but that's what they wanted me to do.
Thank you, I just couldn't resist that, I had to get it in. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and that we approve this item.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Wallace. Is there a second? I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Rupel.
No, but I would like to add that if council decides to approve this item, I do request that we continue to engage in rigorous audit of the cameras. No.
Is it Jason?
Hello, is there someone on the phone? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Summer.
Boy, I'm really conflicted on this. With a strong reservation, yes, but I will add that we have a strong audits.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 3-1.
Thank you. Next item, we have item 8.3, Discussion and Direction Regarding Next Steps for the General Plan Update.
Good evening, once again, Miguel Galvez, Contract City Planner. I've been asked to provide a status report on the general plan update this evening. Since the last meeting, the council took this into consideration, which was August 5th. Staff has been working with Minter Harnish, our consultant to refine the preferred land use alternative based on council direction provided at that meeting. To that end, staff reviewed the urban water management plan to really consider whether or not development can take place within the existing water plant. Basically, it's self-regarding, development cannot occur unless the city has the ability to determine that we have water to serve that. The city staff met with the Farm Bureau. We met with them and a number of the board of directors and received comments, which we provided a letter to the council. City staff has met internally, met eternal, internal, I'm sorry. We looked at development trends, that's late. We looked at development trends, we looked at emerging industries. And we kind of factored all this to help refine our preferred land use alternative based on the direction that was given to the consultants. They have initiated the process of updating the build-out scenarios for the preferred land use alternative. This item will be presented to the city council at their meeting on November 18th under a public hearing. But just to give you a little more flavor as to some of the things that we looked at, the preferred land use alternative attempts to address some of the following principles. One, it reflects a combination of alternative one and alternative three. Alternative one was a no growth, leave everything status quo. Alternative three was a growth and development. So this preserves some components of alternative one and it also addresses some components with alternative three. The preferred land use alternative that will be presented also confirms the expansion of the sphere of influence to the east, all the way to Sultana. And that is not so much to accommodate development all the way out to Sultana, but to establish land use authority over that. And as part of that, based on our meetings with the Farm Bureau, we're looking at incorporating an agriculture green belt around the city. So we are incorporating a general agriculture land use designation. So we're looking to expand the sphere, but not necessarily growing to it, but reflecting that we do have agricultural land uses and we want to preserve that. So that's one of the other items that we have. We are looking also at expanding the sphere of influence to the west, as was flagged last time to allow for estate residential development west of Robin Avenue. But another tweak that we looked at was to expand the sphere of influence over by the wastewater treatment plant. There's some city-owned property out there, there's, and so we like to make sure that the city maintains land use authority.
I'm sorry, are you referring to industrial or domestic?
Domestic. And so we have like a park side over there by the river. Right now, we want to develop that, that would be under the city's jurisdiction, not the city's, but the county's jurisdiction. So we want to scoot our sphere of influence out there, so that remains under the city's land use authority. We're looking at trying to resist becoming a bedroom community by really, you know, going through and really facilitating single-family development. Single-family development is important, and actually, a variety of housing opportunities is important, not only just single-family, but multifamily and even estate. So we really want to shrink our footprint, see how much land we take up for land, for single-family development, provide opportunities for mixed-use development. And that's another principle where we are considering mixed-use development, where we can combine apartments at the same place where we have businesses. You know, the ideal case where you have businesses on the bottom and apartments on top. We're looking at destining land to accommodate emerging industries. So we want to become not only a job, I want to say job fair, but we want to become a place where people can not only live, but they can work. And it's not just whether it's a local job like trucking or working at foster farms, but providing opportunities where people can tap into some of the emerging industries that are coming in. And so we're looking at identifying land where that can happen, so we can have a jobs-housing balance. Going to the downtown area, we want to encourage mixed-use development, where people can redevelop the downtown core, where you can have a variety of uses, you know, whether it's a coffee shop, a restaurant, a bookstore, an office, next to some of the existing residential areas in the downtown. So really, that helps bring vitality back to the downtown area, but also gives opportunity for people to live where they work as well. We're looking at promoting a healthy community that incorporates a number of public facilities, recreation facilities, whether it's the recplex, whether it's trails for bicycles, pedestrians, places where people can get out, move and, you know, be in social contact. And so we're looking at incorporating some policies that address that. We also take into consideration some of the existing limitations the city is facing, you know, some of the infrastructure limitations. And by infrastructure, I'm talking about the existing overchanges, the Winton Parkway or Hammett, you know, when Caltrans developed those, they did develop them, but they really didn't develop it to full width where we can accommodate increased traffic. And so that kind of forces us, forces us to really consider what type of development we're looking at, how much traffic will it generate and whether our existing traffic network can accommodate that. And so we're looking at those existing limitations. The other limitations we also looked at are levels of services, whether it's our public safety, whether it's fire, fire suppression or police services. So we really look at, you know, can we grow? And if we grow, can we meet those services? The last thing we're focused on was really, we want to make sure we can accommodate growth where infrastructure already exists. So, you know, we're not necessarily interested in doing the hopscotch, like, you know, bypass all this vacant land, but really capitalize on the existing improvements, investments that the city has already conducted. And really, if growth is going to take place, it needs to be taking place in areas where it's easily extendable. So these items will be presented to the city council at the next meeting, November 18th. The consultant is, I said, they're refining their numbers to come up with a new build-out, population figures, jobs figures. And this will be presented to the council for deliberation. And again, this is to identify preferred land use alternative. Once that takes place, then the city will be able to move forward and begin, in earnest, to prepare the environment impact report, to really fill out the chapters of the, I should say, the elements of the general plan. The meeting on November 18th will be a public hearing. That public hearing is already set to be advertised. That provides a quick update, but I'm happy to respond to questions on.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Miguel, you mentioned going towards Sultana, you know, with some ag reserves, whatever you want to call it. How far, I keep getting north, I guess, how far are you looking to go? Currently, we're at Holly, anything further than that? Because we have hundreds, about 10 acres out where the industrial is. Is anything planned for that?
No, basically, what we presented at the last meeting, we're not moving anything further north.
So there's, because we do have some land out there, as you know, is being remediated right now. But once it's done, then what can we do with that land other than, you know, so is there anything that's going to be taken care of that 110 acres the city owns right now?
Yeah, and these are good questions that we can, you know, discuss at the meeting on November 18th.
Yeah, just kind of prepared for, you know.
Yeah, one of the things that we've been talking about is, one, is to make sure that we have some riparian, you know, buffer along the, you know, the river in order to have, you know, back paths and walking and stuff like that. But we also talked about, you know, the creation of some industrial parks so that we could maximize, you know, the use of some of the land, especially that we already have within the city limits. In addition to that, in terms of, we're looking at the state overall, the state depopulation and what's happening within our specific county. And so we're understanding that, looking into the future, that it's going to be much more competitive because of, you know, depopulation. And so our growth rate is not that much. We're talking about possibly 17,000 people by what year?
2020, 21.
Yeah, okay, I mean, it's very minimal. So we're focused on economic development, job growth, looking at emergency, emerging industries. So, you know, we're looking at being competitive in medical manufacturing and housing manufacturing. Housing manufacturing, not what you possibly think of. It's a higher degree. And then also, you know, looking at renewable energy, but looking at, you know, like green fertilizer that requires water and electricity and some other areas that we're looking at. So we, we're taking to the approach of, we're not anticipating having huge growth projections, you know. And meeting, you know, we talked about with the Farm Bureau is like, okay, you have option A, option, or alternative one, alternative two, alternative three. So what we're proposing is something in the middle, somewhere in the middle, that benefits the residents of this city so that we can have not just, you know, the jobs that are in the lower echelon, but be able to attract. Because I think that the city of Livingston is strategically located, you know, in the valley here and that can position itself for some of these emerging industries.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ramirez, and through the chair, of course. That's why I was, I understand slowdown in population growth and, you know, and I wasn't aware of the numbers that you presented, but I thought it would be a little higher, but okay, we'll take that. But it is going to be economic development, be it retail, office-type or industrial warehousing or whatever. That was my question for the 110 acres out there about Foster Farms. You know, that will create jobs, that's the kind of things we're looking at. That's why was my question was, you mentioned Robin, domestic, but there was no mention of, and maybe it will be, I have to wait till the next report, but out there by the industrial, the 110 acres, because it's going to be ours pretty soon here. Foster Farms should be having that back to us after it's been remediated, you know.
Yeah, very good question. So that is definitely part of the overall equation, especially because we already own that property, so it's within the city limits. Our limitations right now is that it's still in the remediation. However, you know, I had directed Public Works to make contact with the state about the decommissioning because right now, we're actually getting some inquiries specifically on whether or not there's a possibility of implementing a green fertilizer facility. And the great thing about that is, we're not talking about, you know, hundreds of acres. You know, we're talking about, you know, maybe less than 10 acres. However, if we can't use the property because it's still under the decommissioning, you know, umbrella, you know, that limits us, doesn't take us out completely. We just, it just means that we're going to have to look at, you know, other property owners in the area or possibly look at acquisition of some property, who knows? But without giving all the, you know, the secrets out. But, but, we, you know, we are looking at different opportunities over there. But we have to get, if there's any hurdles, we need to get through the state first. But we have to get, if there's any hurdles, we need to get through the state first.
Thank you, and I look forward to our November 18th meeting. Thank you.
One quick question, and I've been forgetting to ask this question. As we are planning with the general plan and growing, and even right now with the additional housing down the street that is being built and potentially coming online pretty quick, have the school districts been involved in any of those conversations in regards? Or have they provided input? Because obviously, if the city is growing, and even if it's by two or three thousand people, they have to plan ahead and, you know, kind of look at potential growth in their numbers at school, or the different schools. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We definitely have them involved, and Miguel, can certainly chime in. But one of the great things, and they love development, is because they get development impact fees, you know, they get school fees. And so that's kind of one of the triggers for them, you know. And as a matter of fact, we just had a meeting, and they were really happy because actually, there was a decline in their enrollment, from what I understand. And now with these two projects, it's going to, you know, bring it back up. Anything you want to share?
Yes, actually, I have it in contact with Nick Jones, who's in charge of the elementary school size. We have reached out to the high school as well. In terms of the local elementary school, they're in the process of developing their facilities master plan. And so they will identify, you know, how many schools they have, what their projections are for serving the number of students, and how much growth they can accommodate there. In terms of our overall process, once we refine it, then we'll be able to share with them. Typically, we ask the school district to identify what the threshold is, how many more homes will generate the need for a new school. And we've identified a number of school sites that can be used either for a school site or slash school and park site, so we can kind of combine that. But they definitely will continue to be a partner with us. We're reaching out to them, but like I said, they're in the process of updating their plans as well.
And those areas that we are, you know, outlining for them, for the school sites, we're strategically, you know, placing them where it's not going to create all kinds of traffic issues for us down the road. So strategically, you know, we thought of that and placed them.
Okay, Counsel, are there any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to ask about the school sites, so I'm glad that that's already addressed. Miguel, I know the last time we met, we discussed that a little bit. We've had conversations about planning for a future fire station. I know it's tough enough to get one up and running, but thinking long-term, do we, are we considering the potential of designating land as public facilities for that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Paul. As a matter of fact, I'm, you know, trying to jog my memory here, but if I remember correctly, previous council had designated the Max Foster Park, that corner on Walnut and Dwight. Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the future site for a second station. And so we'll double-check that, but that's kind of what I remember from the past.
Thank you. No further questions, appreciate the presentation.
Just one last question, and then again, maybe, I'm not sure if this falls under the, this item, but there was mention of the current city land that is still under the jurisdiction of Foster Farms. And if I remember correctly, that was the MOU that the city had was up until 2016, 17, 18? And then, so right now, the Foster Farms is still trying to?
Yeah, well, it's not really Foster Farms, it's really the state. So basically, the state comes out, and they monitor, and they basically look at, they're supposed to return the property back to, you know, the state that they received it from the city. And so the state's monitoring, and they're basically saying that that hasn't been met. And it's not that Foster Farms is doing something, I mean, because they would like to just, you know, end that. At this point, the last conversation that we had is, you know, they might look at some different mediation aspects. Anything you want to add, Anthony?
I'll just piggyback, Anthony Trevino, Public Works. I'll just piggyback off of what you said, City Manager, that the last conversation with Foster Farms, they did indicate that they were having trouble with the state releasing their responsibility of remediation. There's still some sites that the state has not approved. City Manager asked staff to reach out to the state and schedule a meeting so we could have a discussion on the remediation efforts and expected or projected releasing of that land. Back to City.
If not all of it, if there's a possibility of releasing a portion, so that we can work with.
Yeah, to my point was going to be, was, you know, because the longer it takes, the city is out of, you know, potential, I mean, really, income. I mean, it's, the city could be using it for, to create something. And then the longer we don't have it, it's, the residents are losing out. So, you know, whether, I don't know, maybe we as council need to look into, what are some of the things that could be done to, you know, if things need to be done to the land to clean it up faster, you know, maybe that needs to be taken into consideration, so then that the state can release it. Because, you know, it's like, you know, when there's a spill, if we don't put pressure and get it cleaned up in two days, it's just going to sit there for five days. So, but if we put pressure and we need it cleaned up in a day, we've got to call somebody and come and get it done, and then we'll send them the bill. Because otherwise, the city's losing out. So I don't know if this is a conversation that needs to be had, but, you know, maybe we can look at other options, because, you know, since 2006, or 16, it's, you know, it's close to 10 years. So I'm not saying that somebody didn't do anything, but somebody didn't do anything way back to make sure that it was ready to go in 2016, or whenever the MOU was ending.
Yeah, we'll be able to, after we have our conversations, we'll have a clearer picture, and then we'll certainly share back with the council.
All right, thank you. So this was just a discussion and direction regarding the next steps. Is there, so with that, we're moving on to item number nine. Announcements and reports, City Council members' announcements and reports. Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, Jackie's already gone, but I'd like to comment on the recplex, on the food trucks. It was my first time being able to get there, even got my wife down there with me. It's quite a good turnout, there was just a lot going on that night. But it was, everybody there seemed happy. Somebody had mentioned to me, maybe they should put a truck inside the buildings. But then after I thought about that, and I didn't think about it quick enough, but I'll get back to that person. You don't want a truck in there with the generators and the gas going inside that building. I know it's pretty well-vented, but no, I would think that would be a mistake. So I think they're better off just how they had them arranged them out in the parking lot. The other announcement I had was the food giveaway. And I made a post very publicly about it. I talked to the gentleman that was in charge of the crew to get the semi in and unload all the pallets. He was very nice, very understanding. I asked him about how he's going to direct traffic, and who approved this. And I don't know where he got his information, but he told me he was approved by the mayor and the chief of police. Now, I don't know whether he directly talked to him, or somebody from the church talked to him. But I was down there well over two hours, coming and going. It was a mess. I actually called the police station, told them to call the chief, and I wanted a squad car come down there, look at Main Street from a police or an emergency situation. Main Street was backed up all the way past all the general. And the guy they had directing at the first intersection was just telling people, just go around any side street. Well, you couldn't get onto the side streets into Main Street, and then they had people double-parked on Main Street. There was no control. The premises was great, there was tons of people there lined up. Unfortunately, there was more people than Main Street could have handled. I just, the idea is great, they need to coordinate more with the city. Where are they going to put it? Where we can control, must have been seven, eight hundred cars, maybe more, going down between the 3F all the way down to here. The roundabout, you couldn't get through. You couldn't get into some of our businesses, because a couple of them called me. It just, the premise and the reception of it was great. The operation, once they got the people lined up, it fell apart. That was my only concern, and that's why I called the police station, have someone, from your perspective, chief, to come down and look at it. I should have had a fire department come down too, but I didn't. Can you comment on, chief, what they said to you, or what was found, when you sent your officers down there?
Good evening again. So yes, they did call to let us know that they were going to be having a delivery. So there's going to be a big rig that was going to be off the truck route. If somebody's making a delivery, there is an exception for that. As far as the event itself, that was not approved through the Livingston Police Department. I got a call probably shortly after you called the police station, and there was, as you say, vehicles all the way out to Campbell, I believe. Definitely causing a traffic hazard. I talked to City Manager earlier, or Monday during staff, and informed him of the situation. He was also aware of it Saturday. And we're going to be working with the church to make sure that, you know, if they host this event next time, that we'll be there to assist them and help it a lot smoother. One of the suggestions that I had was to maybe move it to a different venue, because Main Street's probably not the best spot for that. So that's something that Mr. Ramirez and I are going to be meeting with the pastor at the church. Because as you said, it is, it was an awesome event, but there were some logistics that needed to be worked out. So we're definitely going to assist them next time they have that. I know that we, I believe it was last year, maybe eighteen months ago, Foster Farms had a sale event, where they were giving the chicken. I think it was like, maybe 25% of what it would have cost. And they did reach out to us several weeks in advance, and we were able to set up a traffic plan, and that went very smooth. So we're going to do the same thing with this event, or anybody else that was to have a similar event. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A handful of events, and a couple of things to note. First off, was able to get a tour of our fire station from Captain Allen here, a couple of weeks back, on a Friday. It was really nice to spend some time with our folks in fire, and just get a little bit more enlightened on what they do, get some perspective on things that we need to consider when setting up our own department. Was at the City-City County Relations Dinner last week in Merced, hosted by Merced County. Did receive some bad news that day as it relates to funding for the ACE train. I did not go into detail in these conversations, but got the sentiment that ACE is having issues with funding to get all the way to Livingston. It was stated that as of right now, that funding does not exist. Doesn't mean that it can exist at a later date. But that's certainly something that we're going to have to take a look at. And Mr. Ramirez, I'm assuming that you already tapped into that as well. It's important to note that High Speed Rail is counting on ridership from ACE to consider making it all the way out here. I'm assuming that's something that decision-makers will be talking about. And so it's very important for us to be active on that front, to make sure ACE secures the funding and gets all the way through. Was able to attend virtual meeting hosted by Ms. Patricia Zamora on the downtown corridor project that we're working on in D Street, get information about the report that they put out, and really excited for what you guys have planned. Again, I was coaching on Friday, and so I wasn't able to make it out to the event, but I'm glad that that's kicking off. Will be meeting tomorrow, 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 with Fresno State's Office of Community and Economic Development. They have apparently some courses related to, like, family training and things of that sort. Not 100% sure, but that they may be willing to offer for free in the city. And so if there's any potential for that, we'll explore it and report out as needed. And then final thing I'd like to say, put something out to the residents a few days back related to their thoughts on council members providing an annual report during Thursday, State of the City. It was generally very well-received. I had a few people reach out to me individually and say, yes, do that, put something together. We want to know what you've been doing. And so I will be preparing a few minutes of an annual report, nothing too long. Know the mayor's going to give his address, but if it's okay with the rest of the council, we decide to move on it. I would like to present that on Thursday and give you a heads-up to the rest of the council that I will be doing that, in case you decide to do that yourself as well. But nothing else to report.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Thank you, and, I'm sorry, Captain Rupel. Yeah, that was kind of a heartbreaker regarding ACE. Unfortunately, ACE was cut on High Speed Rail, High Speed's counting on ACE. When one went for whatever Fed's decision, because we know that's where it started from, it impacted the other, and now it becomes, you know, chicken or the egg, which one goes forward first? You know, unfortunately, I don't foresee any assistance for High Speed Rail as long as we have the current administration in DC. Maybe another administration will change, and more open to mass transit, buses, and all that. But unfortunately, I think we're pretty much in idle mode for the next three years or so. And other than that, Friday, I think a lot was going on. We had the event at the Recplex downtown. And I got to do, I didn't get to attend any of those because I set aside that day just for my granddaughter. I'm sorry, folks. Sometimes that little gal just takes your heart and says, Nana, this is what we're going to do. And I said, yes, boss, we're going to do that. The only drawback we had was, once we hit the streets, I think not only us, but all of our kids got attacked by mosquitoes, which I heard from many, many people. And I made sure, my other assignment that I had through the city, that mosquito abatement knows, and they will respray again. Seems like blame it on global warming, blame it on mosquitoes getting tougher, you know, I mean. Mosquito abatement does do the sprays, they use drones, they use planes, they do everything through trucks. Seems like mosquitoes are rather difficult this year, but they are going to come back again and hit Livingston. So that way I can show the folks, hey, you know, we are going to do something. And once again, to the citizens, if they're listening, and everybody, if you do have a particular area that think mosquito abatement needs to address, please contact the mosquito abatement. They will come by, and they will spray, and there's no charge for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a few items to report on. Last Friday was the last Friday for the food truck Fridays. And people were asking, when are you guys going to do that again? And I'm like, well, I don't know, let me ask Jackie, see, you know, see if we have to wait a whole other year to come to do this again. But, you know, they were very well-attended. Friday being the last day, being Halloween night, and those mosquitoes, man, they were terrible. I mean, I normally do okay with mosquitoes, but these ones were huge, and they were just vicious. It's just, you know, sometimes you go like this, and they'll go away, but this one was just, they didn't go away. But anyways, food truck Fridays were great, food was great. But anyways, food truck Fridays were great, food was great. After the first night, I decided it to, the next time that I would come back for, on Friday, I was going to have half a dinner at home before I came over, and then here I could have another half dinner, because the lines were too long, there was a lot of people, which is good, you know? So that way I wasn't too hungry when I ordered my food. So, but those Fridays were well-received. The other Los Muertos, we already talked about it, it was great for being the first one to be done, you know? Also, thank you to the, all the different businesses that participated that had their altars and their business. That was good, I was able to, I did get a chance to visit a few, I was, I did not get a chance to visit all of them, but they looked really nice and they were very appreciative to be, to have been considered to participate. So I think this is only going to grow for next year. My sincere condolences to Jason Rodd, Councilmember Jason Rodd. Like as previously mentioned, his grandmother passed away today, that's why he's not here today. Our prayers are with him and his family. About a week ago, we also had Esmeralda Soria, Assemblymember Esmeralda Soria, visiting the city of Livingston, and she did host the meet and greet here in Livingston, and there was, there was a couple of us there. And it was interesting to see people from outside the area that came, that drove all the way out here from Los Banos. I know there was a couple of people from Los Banos there that drove all the way to Livingston, and, you know, one, they, this was the first time in Livingston, because they're originally from the Bay Area, but they lived in Los Banos, and they wanted to come and visit Livingston, and, you know, we had some good feedback on that. And then on Thursday, as everybody knows, just a reminder, the State of the City is going to be in here in the council chambers on Thursday at 5:30, and then the program is going to start at 6:00. So we hope to see you here. And other than that, no additional items to report. Next item on the agenda is item number 10, council direction on future agenda items. Anything, council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple.
Yes, go ahead.
Can we get, and I may have the proposition wrong, Miguel will correct me. Can we get identified if it, if I understood the right number now, I may be wrote it down wrong. Prop 59 says the state can come in and dictate where we have to put housing without our say on it, at bus stops, rail, transportation centers. Where is, did they just pass that, if I understood right? What, can we get, identify all what could be affected in the city limits with that Prop I'd just like to know ahead where they're, where it could affect our planning, because they're taking all of our local control away. And the other two items, real quick, shopping carts. I think any new development that's going to have shopping carts with the business, they have to have them, the locking mechanism, they can't go out of their parking lot. More and more of the carts are winding up downtown, and we've actually, I've actually seen two homeless people using them running around. I know the police department had to get one out of the McDonald's area once. And then the other one, and I can speak from experience on this, I think it's time the city look at entertaining, I know it would have to go on the ballot, we need to eliminate an elected treasurer and city clerk. We already have people that are hired doing the job. Majority of the cities in California do not do this, because, in my experience, well, because I ran for city clerk and I won. I have no absolute experience at all in being a city clerk. If you read what it's supposed to do, you can't do it. I think it's time the city update that, it should be an employee doing the job that is qualified. Those would be my three things that need to be, start thinking about and put on the agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, really quickly.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace, the state law that you mentioned, were you referring to SB 79? It's a housing bill by Senator Weiner.
Okay, I was just saying, I'm not sure of the number, I wrote it down too quick.
Okay. Yeah, I believe that's, I don't know if there's a Prop 59 in place that got passed this year, but there definitely is a housing bill, SB 79, that would impose state control on housing near transit areas. Okay? Yeah.
And just one last item that I want council to consider for the future agenda item is, if I, Mr. Ramirez, if you can refresh my memory, how many bars did Livingston used to have? I think it was 17 or 18, just in downtown?
The number that I remember was 17.
17?
Yeah.
Not that I ever came to them, because I was too small, too young. But I remember people from all around, they used to think of Livingston to come to the bars, because it was like, there was dancing music and stuff like that. So, and then council at one point decided, like, you know, we don't want this type of businesses, especially all throughout downtown in Livingston. So now there's none, right? I think, unless there's, there's one? Yeah, but it's not like a, like, yeah. So, and then, somebody was asking me the other day, Mr. Moran, do you know how many liquor stores do we have in the city of Livingston? And then just right off the top of my head, I started counting, and I think there's more than 17. So we're okay with not having 17 bars, but we're okay with having more than 17 liquor stores, more or less, I don't know. I don't even think there's that many, but I ended up counting like 12 or 13. And that's probably not every place that liquor is being sold, you know, just liquor stores. And then also tobacco stores. Now, the other day I went over to a nearby store, and there was a tobacco store right next door, and they sell a lot of more products than just tobacco. I mean, obviously, it's a way to make business, but I think it's time for council to consider looking at, putting a cap on a number of liquor stores that could be allowed within the city limits, because, you know, eventually we're going to have more liquor stores, I mean, I think we already have more liquor stores than parks. You know, that's for sure. But anyways, a cap for discussion, liquor stores and tobacco stores. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Quick note on that, and the scope may be different with us putting a cap versus us restricting current use, something to maybe put on the city attorney's radar. I know the city of Fresno is in some pretty deep lawsuits with tobacco retailers in their city, because they're, I think they're trying to get folks to shut down. So again, scope may be a little different, but something to consider.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I don't know if we really have 17 dedicated liquor stores, but unfortunately, unless you're counting it this way, do you consider Rancho San McGill a liquor store? Because they do sell liquor and beer. Are they really a liquor store? You know, Liberty sells beer and stuff, are they a liquor store? You know, most stores, even your convenience stores sell beer and all that, and I don't know, I mean, are you referring to a, like a Liquor Plus, a dedicated liquor store? Because I believe we only have one dedicated liquor store.
Like I said, that would be a good conversation to have.
Thank you, I just wanted to, okay, thank you.
All right. I agree with you. Conversation. All right. All right, so at this time, we're going at 10:21, we're closing the regular council meeting, and we're, now, we're opening the second part of the special meeting, which we're, or we're going to adjourn into closed session, and then we'll be back to report out. There was coffee on the back? No, I'm just kidding, there's no coffee. All right, good night, everyone.